All right, good evening, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM on Monday, March 4th, at the Bailey Public Library, and we are recording on Zoom. All right, I believe we have all councilors present. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll just stand in place. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, at this time, I'll open up if there's any public comment from the audience. Anything on Zoom? No comment? We'll move on to our business. Item 29, Discussion of the Annual Funding Request for Cobbasy Watershed and Friends of the Cobbasy Watershed. And I believe I see Bill Monigl here and Wendy, thank you, and...
Tom Mullen.
Tom Mullen.
Jennifer Beasley.
And Jennifer Beasley. Thank you for coming. So we've gotten a couple of these updates from you. We'll go ahead and start with Cobbasy Watershed.
Sure. Does anyone have a copy of the budget? I know that I have brought hard copies, if you'd like, you know.
Yes. I believe it should be included in our packet, I think, page three. And we also have a podium right up here with a microphone.
Oh, okay.
If you'd like to.
Sure. Is this on? It is, right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, what I presented to you, and this forward belonged to the town manager, is a copy of a draft budget, draft number one. It's our first cut of the budget this year. We've just started our process. Our Board of Trustees had a meeting on February 14th, and this is the first budget we looked at. Formed a budget committee. The budget committee has yet to meet yet. This is the budget that I put together, presented to the trustees. This is my 32nd or so annual budget I've prepared for the district, and they don't usually change all that much. It's pretty much the same most years. As you can see, I think, because I also sent you a comparison of this year's municipal assessments and what would be proposed with a 6% increase in municipal assessments for this year, what that means for the Town of Winthrop. And as you can see, that would be an increase of over $6,600 for the year. I don't know how you want me to go over this. I don't know if you want to talk about that, or if you want me to just go over the proposed budget, the far-right columns, and then I can make some comments regarding how those numbers are, were developed relative to what was budgeted for this year, what we anticipate spending.
That would be great. And then also, under the expended column, just where we're at currently as far as the timeline in the year. So is that 75% expended so far, according to this?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right.
Our fiscal year is July 1st to June 30th. So actually, we're two-thirds of the way through. Let's go there four months. Okay. Well, as you can see, under Personnel, we're looking at an increase, a percent increase of 2.3%. But what you'll notice is that for this year, our expenditures, I do, we do not expect to spend the full personnel line this year. So we lost a staff person at the very end of December. And we are now advertising, re-advertising the main Sunday Telegram Saturday, which got on some websites. We're looking to fill that position. We need it filled, hopefully, by sometime in May. So this expended estimated includes, right now, Wendy and me for the rest of the year, plus maybe a month and a half of the new staff person. And the increase over on the far right, 2.3%, actually represents about 3.2%, which is the cost of living for Social Security, which is generally what we usually follow. And so that's, the reason it's not 3.2 is because we're not, if we hire someone in May, we're not going to give the cost of living increase on July 1st. So wait a year for this. The next line is one that you can see that we budgeted zero for this year, and that's for an intern, and we're not spending any of this here for an intern. We stopped, we traditionally have interns for the summer to help especially our lake water quality monitoring effort, which is, you know, we monitor 26 lakes roughly monthly. It's a boat job, like with two people in a boat for safety, and it's also easier to do the work. And it's a good job for summer interns, college students that are going into that profession. It was during COVID that we stopped because of obviously having two people in a truck, two people in a boat, and that wasn't going to work out, and we just haven't had the opportunity in the last couple of years to do that. But we still put two people in a boat, and I think it's not really efficient to have, although, you know, we do do it, but it would be nicer to have staff of interns, summer interns, doing that with our full-time lakes specialists. NPS Direct. I'm only going to talk about the things that are really changes. You can see there's a 46% reduction in non-point source, that's non-point source pollution direct. Those are direct costs associated with our grants. In this year's budget, we have two federal grants, Torsey Pond Protection Grant, Torsey Up and Greenfield in Mount Vernon, and Cobbasy Lake Phase 3 Grant for this year, well, these projects, we've been working with the Friends of Cobbasy Watershed on. We only have the Torsey Pond Grant for this coming fiscal year. So the direct cost for Torsey, obviously, will be just the $25,000. Cobbasy, that project will be over with. Health benefits. You can see that we're not spending, we're not going to spend what was budgeted for health insurance. Our health insurance is through Maine Municipal Employees Health Trust. And we, because we lost our staff person in December, we covered their insurance through December, but for about five months of the remaining, five of the six remaining months of the fiscal year, that person, there's no one there to take the health insurance. For cost-saving measures, I voluntarily, after 30 years, gave up my health insurance through Maine Municipal, my Blue Cross Blue Shield, and I went to Medicare. I'm at that point, and then I'm just on an advantage plan. So that will save the district about $9,000 a year by doing that. So next year, we're going to be budgeting for health about $22,000, where this year was closer to $32,000. Going down, health benefits are below that. I guess the really next big change, you know, a lot of these numbers don't change. Like I said, I've been doing it for a long time. Our rent can go up 3% every year. It doesn't go up 3% every year, but our lease says that they can do it, so I budget it for that. Hostage usually comes right in. All those lines are just pretty much bare bones. And I'll take you down to real big changes, well, obviously, in income, municipal assessments, and water district contribution. That's the Water and Utility District, 6% increase. And federal state grants, like I said, this year, we have Cobbasy Phase 3 Grant and the Torsey Pond Grant, so there's $75,000 plus in income revenue for those grants. Next year, it's just the Torsey Pond Grant, so that's a reduction of $35,000. But again, not all of that is money that would be supporting Cobbasy Watershed District staff, like if you go back up to where I mentioned, the NPS Direct, you can see that $21,000 of that difference was for direct costs. And then, yeah, that's pretty much that. It's for construction-type things, ham road, road projects, municipal road projects. And forward from reserves. Now, we had budgeted, it's not the practice we like to do, but we sometimes have to forward money from our own general reserves to balance the budget, because we're required to have a balanced budget. And we expected to give forward $10,235 this year, but because of losing that staff person, the reduction in salary, the reduction in health insurance costs, we actually end up in the black, we actually essentially put $15,000 into our reserves as a result of that in the current fiscal year. And under contributions miscellaneous, you see, we budgeted $10,750. We have already received around $3,500, and I don't see any more money on the horizon. We expected some of those donations. The $10,000, $10,000 of that, $10,750 was unfortunate, as that we, for six or seven years, had been recipient of $10,000 roughly per year from a local foundation that actually sought us out and offered to, and got us into their program. And they have changed the criteria for their environmental projects and funding grants, and we're not really eligible. There are a whole lot of other watershed-type groups. It's more for, they're looking at other things like inclusivity and all kinds of things, programs for outreach for, you know, the general public and access. And you also have to, like, have a program, like an education-type, a full-time program. We don't have programs like to address climate change. We deal with climate change in a lot of the things we do, but we don't have programs for public outreach and that. So that's something that they are going to actually look to be revisiting, to see if they can bring in some of the watershed groups throughout the state that were benefiting from that program. So with all that, looking at this year, that we're with the 6%, we're going to still have to transfer $21,475 from what reserves we do have this year. So that's, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of magic in this budget, so.
I have two questions. How much are you saving? Did you save, say you save your savings $15,000 from December to now in salary and benefits from not having filled that one position?
It's not all that. There are some lines in there. I could go back up and show a couple thousand dollars here and there, and I could go up and show you gauge operation up under direct costs. Second line, from the bottom, we budgeted $3,600. We're going to spend probably $1,374. But we're going to, we are going to be on budget for $3,600. We just did not activate a program this year. We have money already set aside, $10,000, $10,000 to purchase a new gauge for, for screen gauging on Cobbasy Lake. Is that the one, Wendy, correct? Or is it the lake gauge or the screen gauge?
We need both, so either one.
So, yeah, and then the $3,600, we have, we have been spending $3,600 almost every year for about 15 years. We tend to retain five, like to retain, like, retired USGS engineers, who then they have to calibrate and maintain the gauges. They're very sensitive devices, so.
And the other question I had was, because the overall budget's going down, you know, 4.5%, but our assessment's going up 6%.
Right. Yeah, but again, like I said, $35,000 of that income is the loss of the Cobbasy Phase 3 Grant. Our grant, grants went from $75,000 to going down to $40,000. There's $35,000 right there.
Oh, I know, okay.
And I'm going to be submitting another grant for Cobbasy Lake, the RFA, RP, we call it RFA now, Request for Applications, coming out the end of March. Application to be due May 17th. And we have a lot of work we need to do on Cobbasy Lake right now, still. And we're kind of in a pinch there because, time-wise, because we have a watershed-based plan, because it's a 10-year lifetime, has to be approved by EPA and DEEP, and it expires in 2015, and you have to have an approved plan to be eligible to pursue these grant monies to do implementation and structure, so.
What do the monitoring expenses include?
I'm very glad you asked that. The analysis of our, of our water samples primarily, which are like phosphorus samples, like phosphorus samples, chlorophyll samples, maintenance of our boat, boat gas, anything that has anything to do with our water quality monitoring program. Probes for our dissolved oxygen meter, we find every year there's about, you know, $1,000, $1,000-plus worth of things that are not laboratory analysis. And what happened, I'm really glad you asked that, Shannon, because, was it Wendy? Three years ago, two years, maybe, the state of Maine, after many, many years, they did not increase the cost of the laboratory analysis for phosphorus and chlorophyll at the state Health and Environmental Testing Lab, and they have to go to the legislature to increase costs, and they did it a couple of years ago, and they increased the cost of phosphorus analysis, which is our primary parameter that we test for. That's what causes most of the algae blooms in our lakes. They increased the cost by 75%. We used to budget somewhere around $14,000. We were doing that in the low teens, and now we're, we have to get up to $22,000, and even that's a tight budget, too.
It actually increased at 80%.
80% for phosphorus, right.
So it really hurt.
Yeah. And there's no, really, there's no way to get around that. I mean, you can't really consider going to another lab. You get, there's only so many certified labs that have the right, you know, limits of detection, and also, we'd like to, we should always maintain consistency with the other lake groups that are reporting data throughout the state, what the state is using themselves at DEEP for data, so we're all using the same apples and apples, whatever.
So if we're 60% through the fiscal year so far, it shows that it's already all been expended for what you had budgeted for the year?
No, 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 no. This is what I anticipate spending. This isn't spent today.
The expended portion of...
This is estimated to be spent by June 30th.
Okay.
Right, that's, so there's a little crystal ball action here. It's like, I mean, it's like, you know, I can look at some of these and I go, I know we're going to spend all of this money, but, you know, like, for instance, there is a scenario where the $46,000, I'll just say for NPS Direct, will not be spent by the end of June, but it's going to be spent in July, but it's budgeted this year. We're on an accrual basis, we're not on a cash basis. It's like, you know, that money could, but it's already accounted for, and I have to spend it, so.
Okay, so that's looking at the full year's spending. Okay. And then my other question is, for dam maintenance, do we have that included in any of the line items? Or how does that go?
That's not a Cobbasy Watershed, that's not in the Cobbasy Watershed District budget. The dam maintenance is the responsibility of the owners of dams.
Okay, so the town?
They're often, they're usually towns. There'll be lake associations, private ownership.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? The council, comments, discussion?
I'd just like to point out, as I opened up with, this is a first cut. We're going to have a budget committee meeting, where we're going to look at this and start, you know, trying to maybe fine-tune it a little bit more. And I understand that I probably, I think I'm expected to be back April 8th. And our board is scheduled to meet, we meet the second Tuesday of March, so we'll be meeting on April 9th. And barring any unforeseen difficulties, we will be signing off on the budget at the board level, and I will be preparing the budget warrant, similar to a town budget warrant, that I posted all the town offices and notifying the public, and our annual budget meeting is scheduled for May 21st. And that's open to all registered voters of the municipalities of the district. So that'll be at the YMCA club, our camp. That's what we've been doing, ever since COVID hit. Used to do it at middle school cafeteria, but that's not a good place to go when you have, there's a COVID outbreak, so.
So Bill, so Bill, as you know, I work for Seven Lakes Alliance, which is an organization that's similar to the Cobbasy Watershed District. And it was common practice for them to have, because they had seven lakes, multiple 319 Grants going at one time. Is that, is that something that the Cobbasy Watershed District does or has ever done?
We've generally had two going every year, sometimes as many as three at one time, with two, and then the Allo Treatment for...
They may not realize that those two grants you talked about, Torsey and Cobbasy, are 319 Grants. So we have two 319 Grants going right now.
We have two going right now.
I see. So the, so the decrease in your grant funding relates to one grant?
Will be going from two to one.
Yeah, the Cobbasy Lake Grants, it was, you know, we have stuck, so.
Well, again, just my experience at Seven Lakes was, they were always applying for multiple grants each year, so that they always had multiple grants every year that were contributing to the, to the cost. And so that was something that they sort of planned for in their, in their grant applications.
We apply for one or two per year, and it's, it's related to our staffing. Seven Lakes Alliance has more than twice the staff members that CWD does, so we're doing well when we apply for two.
And also, you know, I mean, grants are great to get the money for, because you've got to come up with the money for implementation, for construction. But frankly, there is enough work that we do with eight towns and planning boards. I do a lot of, most of the development reviews for all the planning boards, whether they're subdivisions, commercial operations. Wendy does all the water levels monitoring, and also the water levels management, coordination. And then we oversee our routine water quality monitoring program, like, yes, you know, yeah, right, the Seven Lakes has seven lakes. We have 28 lakes, and we're monitoring 26. And that's two staff people, six months of the year, tied up every single day, that they're not working on grants. So I'm pretty much project manager for most of our grants, that's managing all the grants. So I don't have a staff person as a project. I know at the Seven Lakes, they have a job that's called project manager.
Yeah, that's, that's actually just more erosion control that's sort of on the ground as opposed to managing the, the grant itself. But let me ask you another question. So you just mentioned, Bill, that you do a lot of work for planning boards across the watershed. So is that reflected in your contract in these revenue line item? You don't charge for that service?
We don't charge towns. We do have, we do have fees, and ever since, it's, it's actually been since quite a long time that the planning boards have been really quiet before COVID. I used to be at the planning board all the time, and there was so much activity. It's starting to pick up, it's mostly solar farms. But it was really, really busy at a time when we started off not charging. We started charging a fee for development reviews. Some of you may remember, I know, Andy, you do, when a large 109-watt affordable housing subdivision was proposed for Route 135, Winthrop Center Road in 2003 or '04, or no, 1993 or '94. 109 lots, three phases, and it was for, it was an outside developer down near the Portland area that was proposing to do this. You can only imagine how much time it consumes with all the plans, all the road sections, the three miles of road, all of the drainage that I had to review, all of the house lots and everything, and the time that's going in. And then these people brought the project. And, you know, it got to a point, is that, I just wanted to say, Anthony, most of the larger projects that we were dealing with back then were not actually being proposed by locals, they were people coming in to develop.
Well, don't get me wrong, Bill, I'm not suggesting that you should charge the towns for that, but it seems to me reasonable and potential revenue stream for you to charge the applicants for doing this thing.
I do if it's, if it's more than an hour. A lot of these small development, I can do in an hour, and our rate's like $70 an hour. I do not charge a fee, we do not charge a fee for a pre-application meeting. I'll sit down with any developer or consultant, hash out some things, figure out, okay, this is, make sure that we all have the same vision of where we have to be to get an approval, and then as long as they come in with a plan, I write a letter. That's the most time-consuming thing, is writing a one-page letter.
Well, and, and again, I think all of that, that's a worthy process. I just think it's something that you could monetize to help offset some of your other costs.
Right. That's, that was the intention. I'm just saying, it's...
Yeah, well, and if you charge the applicant, then I think that's something probably towns would be very supportive of.
Well, they are. In fact, the Town of Monmouth includes it in their escrow, is a planning board, they collect escrow upfront, and that includes Cobbasy Watershed District fees. But other than that, in Winthrop and other towns, I submit an invoice, I send it to the consultant, not the applicant themselves. I send it to the consultant, and let him just incorporate that in his fee to his client, so.
Counselor Steele has a question, too.
It's on, Jim.
All right, great. So I'm looking at your assessment comparison for all the towns and the costs that they currently are giving and the increases. How does Winthrop get assessed at this point? How do you guys break that down? Give me, for each town, why they pay certain percentages that they give.
They're based on a value of property. I originally set it within 600 feet of the shore of the, of the lakes. Winthrop, the 26, 28 lakes in the district, 12 of the lakes are in or on Winthrop's border. And Monmouth is, has the second-most property value surrounding their lakes. And towns that have over, or contribute 15% or more of the total municipal assessments are entitled to have two trustees. So there are two trustees representing Winthrop on our board, two representing Monmouth.
So you're saying that we're double what Monmouth has for property surrounding lakes?
Yes. I mean, you know, you look at Cobbasy, Anavessica, Upper Lower Neowals, Paranoka. You know, it's Wilson, Berry, Dexter. Winthrop's got, you know, when the Cobbasy Watershed was formed in the early '70s, and the towns were going to referendum to vote to enter the district. Winthrop was the first town to vote to enter. All the other towns were waiting. If Winthrop wasn't going to join, none of the others were going to bother. So it's...
You know, I just wanted to understand how the figures, you see that, you know, the next town is Monmouth, you'd say, get $55,000.
A lot of shorefront property, a lot of shorefront value in Winthrop. I think I understand that there may be another redoubt coming up sometime soon, but the most recent one, and I've got some figures, I know, I know time's getting short here, but she's between 1997 and 2009, 12 years apart in the Town of Winthrop. The valuation of shorefront property went from around 90-something billion dollars to 200, over 210 million. They went up about 150% in 12 years. Anavessica alone went up actually 200%, it tripled in its value, and with no new houses being built. I mean, there was no new building permits sold. It went from under $10 million to over $30 million in 12 years. And I'm sure that's going to be a bit higher now, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Wendy and Bill.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, thanks. First off, let me introduce myself. My name is Tom Mullen, and I'm the Executive Director of the Friends of the Cobbasy Watershed. And joining me today are Jennifer Beasley, our Conservation Programs Manager, and in the audience are representatives from the Meranikook Lake Association, Peter Washburn, from the Cobbasy Conti Lake Association, Steve Delisle and Bill Kittletka, and from the Anavessica Lake Improvement Association, Carol Branding, who's president, and Russ Clark. And I appreciate them joining us today. First, let me thank the town, but also the citizens of Winthrop for their support over the years for the Friends of the Cobbys' aquatic invasive species work and control and management, been instrumental in being able to do what we've been able to do. Second of all, we gave you an updated packet of information. What I have, what we've proposed is that they're asking the citizens of the Town of Winthrop and the Selectman, meaning Board, to support a total request of $24,000 for prevention and control efforts in battling AIS, aquatic invasive species in the Winthrop waterways. And we're, we submitted it as one package representing the various lake associations to make it sort of the holistic outlook as opposed to the individualized. At this point in time, we're just, it's pretty straightforward, and hopefully you've had a chance to review it in advance. But if you have any particular questions for us, try to address them either myself, Jennifer, who's the scientist on the stage today, but also our representatives, supporters from the various other associations are here to address any particular questions as well.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the panel? So for the courtesy boat inspections that you get, is that considered volunteers or do you hire?
We actually hire, we actually utilize volunteers for courtesy, oh, Bob's, I just have some here, right here. But Jennifer coordinates our CPI program and they're actually paid employees. That way we're able to establish and ensure that we have inspectors at the boat launch, the 10 boat launches that we monitor throughout the watershed and particularly those within the town of Winthrop to ensure that no invasive species are coming in or out of the lakes as a challenge for transmittal between lakes and off the state of Maine. And I should have let Jennifer answer that.
I can also say that there are increases for the price of the CPI program in our watershed due to just inflation, general inflation, but also we've had to increase minimum wage, or sorry, the starting wage for our CBI's due to the increase in minimum wage throughout the state of Maine, both this year and then also next year, kind of thinking ahead towards the future. With that, we also had to increase our coordinator pay as well and then pay across the scale.
It's a matter of staying competitive to ensure that we have the staffing to ensure that the courtesy boat inspectors are there when they need. Certainly volunteers are a critical piece to it, but we're covering a lot of CBI inspection spots on a, in many, in some cases, seven days a week, so.
Has it been hard to find people?
It was, it's challenging every year. And what we're looking for is not just any warm body that shows up, but also there's a certain amount of communication skills and personality traits that work for common customer service orientation. It's a courtesy boat inspection process that's required. And these individuals aren't law enforcement, so they're not there to require inspections. So there's a certain amount of skills and levels of professionalism that are needed to hire the right person. Like to have a deep pool of applicants, as you might say.
Go ahead, Roy.
Do you have, you have a breakdown of what the other communities, what you're asking the other communities for?
Yes, so in the second page of the packet, you should see that breakdown for what we're asking Winthrop versus kind of like what we're asking for other towns. A lot of that, again, has to do with various factors like the increase in inflation, increase in minimum wage and our base rate and wages across the field for seasonal stuff. But also it has to do with our aquatic invasive species status report, which you also have on the third page as well. And it just reflects just the infestation. Some of them we've been able to manage really well throughout the past few years. But in Cabessi Lake specifically, we have seen an increase in Eurasian water milfoil. We've also seen a wider spread of that as well into the Cabessi outlet and down Cabessi stream. So just because of more work that we have to do to manage this coming season and also thinking ahead for the future, that kind of reflects the increase, slight increase in our funding request.
What area of Cabessi did you say that you're seeing that increase in?
Well, so we're seeing it at certain sites across the lake. So it's not necessarily just in one location. We're seeing increased infestation sites. But Cabessi Lake, or sorry, Cabessi Outlet and Cabessi Stream, that's where we found a large, pretty large infestation recently. So just this past year, that's a new location that we found Eurasian water milfoil.
That did lead to us finding, really ramping up our survey work throughout the lake and also to ensure public communication that the boat launches across the watershed, we found Eurasian water milfoil, not just moonlight stopping. Usually in September, early October, this field season has ended. Jennifer and another staff member were in the water the first week in November because of the warm waters and the growing season this year, discovering Eurasian water milfoil in spot locations, at various locations throughout the Cabessi Conti Lake. So the trends are that the season, the field season for spread of invasive is not just the summertime anymore. It's extending well into the fall.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Do you guys think that you're aggressive enough in prevention in that area? Or do you find that you maybe lack, I know you're coming forth of the budget, so you're trying to come in as little as possible. But given, you know, results, right? If we look at the results of the last few years, do you have concerns that we're not being aggressive enough in regards to prevention?
Well, that's a great question. So we have seen many instances where courtesy boat inspector program has worked and has helped us kind of get on top of the infestations. One example of that was actually in 2000, it was the mid 2000s, I believe it was 2013, was when the CBI found variable weak milfoil on a boat leaving Annabessica. And so that kind of made us think that there must be an infestation somewhere in Annabessica lakes. Then the next year, with the help of multiple organizations, we were able to find where that infestation was and start preventative measures. To this day, in Annabessica, I believe that our management has really helped the lake. It has been able to manage it to a certain extent. We do see some, you know, infestations outside of our larger infestation sites in Annabessica, but it has helped us get on top of it before it became, you know, overtook the lake. So I do think that our courtesy boat inspection program has certainly worked in a lot of instances as a really important measure. And I certainly believe that increasing our base pay for CBI's should help make it a little bit more competitive so that we have a full staff, which we've struggled with in the past. And then we can also educate on other things that can help prevent aquatic invasive spread, like the clean, dry measures.
But to answer your question, no, we need more resources. Because the key aspect of that is not, we're never going to be able to eradicate the aquatic invasive species. We don't like to use the word eradicate because that's just, it's just not a legitimate term to use. But control and management of it and prevention is the key element to it. And so enhance plant survey teams throughout the watershed and Cabessi Conti Lake in particular are on the books for planning to expand our efforts to ensure that we don't actually have a monumental leap in invasives.
Two questions. Your breakdown on that sheet, is that based on boat launch? Or what you put cost for inspection of boat launch? Is that like volume because, you know, certain launches are probably busier than others? Is that how you?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so it's based on that. It's also based on, you know, we do coordinate with our lake associations and kind of see what is a reasonable ask for funding. So yeah, so it's based on boat traffic. It's also based on, you know, just what the status of aquatic invasive species are in the lake. So you might see Cabessi Lake has a larger funding request, but that's kind of takes into account all the variables with it being such a popular lake to recreate on, but also the status of the aquatic invasive species as of this past season.
Okay, and the next question is, how much does the state give you guys based on each, you know, each registration, we pay X dollar for that, which is a sticker that goes to it and everyone does it. So how much does the state, do you guys get back to you guys for this?
So we're getting for all our efforts on a total basis, and we just submitted our proposal from the state in various parts in the last month or two months. But we get, we receive approximately $100,000 or state DEP funding. Now, to bear it out of the, out of the each permit, I couldn't tell you exactly what that is.
No, I think you'd see the time of 15, it could be up to 20. I don't remember what it is. I just pay them my boat registration when I go there. So it's, it is what it is. I just don't feel for our areas for the volume of lakes. There doesn't seem like a whole lot of money for the money that they're collecting on the boat registration.
Yeah, well, there you go. What can I say? But the, at the same point, our total aquatic invasive species program cost is approximately $350,000 a year. So the state is substantial, but not, we have to make it a significant amount to ensure the recreational and the economic viability of the lake economy.
Thanks.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your presentation. You know, I think that you do a great job and appreciate all the time your members put into it as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just wanted to say that all the work that we do would not be possible without the collaboration with the lake associations and the towns. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Cabessi Watershed District, thank you Friends of the Cabessi Watershed. Looking forward to the 5K again this summer and to all the lakes associations for coming out. We'll move on to item 30, discussion and consideration of a proposal to study repair the Annabessica Lake Dam in conjunction with the town's participation in the community resilience partnership. And I do believe that we have some residents of Monmouth here in attendance as well. And we do still have some of the Cabessi Watershed here as well. And the Annabessica Lake Association is still here as well. Thank you.
So Shannon, I invited the Monmouth Town Manager. I think he has some folks with him and our friends from the Cabessi Watershed District because I know there are questions by council members and so I think they're prepared to try to answer any questions you may have.
Would it be all right if I just made sure that you folks have this information?
We do.
So maybe if other?
I did see total precipitation for 2023 was 59.36 inches in the Cabessi Watershed District. That is a lot, so.
Yes, it was a lot. Way too much.
The top three and the two other years have been higher since we started measuring, since you started measuring in 1976. And that was in 2005, I think was the most, the wettest year.
It was.
So, and then, yeah. So we've got some good information in here regarding that. And so regarding the Annabessica Lake Dam, have you seen a decrease now as the water's starting to go down a bit? Or?
I guess I would just point out that you look.
Perhaps the two things that might stand out relating to Annabessica in this report on the front page at the bottom, there's a photograph that you folks saw a couple of months ago of the dam and water going around it during one of our several flooding events this year. And next to that photo, there's a discussion about the lakes that we keep track of the water levels on and that most of them were within our winter standards, which are definitely a high level in winter. It's supposed to be well below full pond. There are a couple of exceptions. There was a Narrows Pond, upper and lower Narrows, because there is no dam there. So you can't move the water along any faster. And the other one was Annabessica. And there is a dam there and there is a system of boards, but when nothing can be taken out because the water is too high, then you can't do anything to send the water along faster. So that point was made that those were the water bodies that were not meeting the winter water level standards and all of the other lakes were. And on the back of that report, the graph at the bottom, which shows the distance that lakes are with respect to their full pond elevation. So the top line really is zero and those blue bars going down, or maybe they're not in color on yours, but the bars going down show that most of the lakes or lake systems, because there's, for example, Wilson, Berry and Dexter are all controlled by one dam. So there's a lot of lake systems here involved. But you see that all the, most of the lines are indicating that the lake levels at the end of February had had a chance with the dry weather after those big storms to drop to about a foot below full pond. Except where's Annabessica? That's that little barely perceptible line where it's just above full pond. So the dry spell didn't do much for Annabessica. It wasn't allowed to recover because the other lakes could open another gate or two and let more water out. Nothing could be done at Annabessica. So it really stands out. So I hope that's the answer to your question as to how Annabessica's doing now. And then we had another half an inch rain, it was an inch rain, and it's now seven and a half inches above full pond at Annabessica as of today.
I do have one question. Where, it's high currently, you're saying?
It's today, it's seven and a half inches above full pond.
Well, although we don't have any, there's no boards in there. I've been down and taken some pictures. Right here is a, do you suppose the brush, the two feet of brush that's in the front of the dam outlet would be holding up some of the lake water?
Sure, debris always holds back some water, yes.
Yeah, it's been like that for a while. I've been monitoring it. So I'm just curious if that would play a part in it.
That would help a little. And then it would help if the other half of the boards could be removed from the dam.
You can look down a good four feet and you can't see any of the boards in the dam.
Right, but there are 13 boards. The 13th one is probably sunk in the mud by now, but six of them have been removed. So there's still half of them in there. And so if there was a gate that one could open in a hurry when you needed to and then close it when you didn't, you know, you could make some changes, whereas now it's just a little dip in the spillway that water goes through. So I know you have questions that other folks, Justin can answer too, but go ahead.
So thank you for providing these graphics for us. I just had a question too, as far as looking at Maranacook Lake. As far with it is 11 and a half inches below full pond. Is it beneficial at all to kind of hold off the dam there to allow the lake to subside a little bit for Annabessica?
Well, yes and no. That would benefit it some, but I think that all the money that the town spent to renovate the Maranacook Dam so that flooding could be managed on Maranacook, it doesn't seem wise to just not use that half a million dollar dam for the purpose for which it was, you know, renovated. So actually more water could be let out of Maranacook than is being let out. So we do conserve a little bit that way. Don't just send all the water that could be sent down. But you don't hold back a lot because of what I just said, of the efforts made to prevent flooding in Maranacook. And the Torsey Pond Dam upstream of Maranacook was renovated for the same purpose. And so this is what's happening with dams. And so it needs to be done at Annabessica so that they can all manage flooding.
In the case that an engineer does their survey of the Annabessica Dam, do they just look at that concrete opening? Or do they look at the entire dam across?
I spoke with a state dam inspector. There is an employee at the, at MEMA, the Main Emergency Management Agency, who was the state dam inspector. And he's been doing that job for many years. And his recommendation for the Annabessica Lake Dam is that a couple of things be done. I had talked in January about having a dive, underwater dive inspection be done. And he's also recommending a whole survey by a surveyor of the stream bed for 10 feet upstream, 15 feet downstream, so you understand the whole shape of the riverbed. Basically, it's to look for holes and scouring in the dam. So let me back up. The answer to your question, Shannon, is the hole dam. And because you need to make sure that that dam is in a stable condition. And so before putting in a gate or doing something just at that opening, his strong recommendation is to have that survey done and the underwater dive done so that you find out if there's scouring under the dam, which he suspects there is some. And that could undermine the whole, you know, stability of the dam. So you want to know that first, just find out what condition the dam is in. And that would be part of the money that would be spent in this. And that would be part of the money that would be spent in this grant if we were successful in getting it. And the other part would be to then study that opening and putting in a new gate to discharge more water to control flooding. So it's a two-part.
And how wide across, do you know how wide the dam is entirely?
Well, okay, you're gonna have to go on my memory, which may or may not be exactly accurate here, so I'm gonna say 160 feet, give me plus or minus 20. And the opening is only around six feet, the most.
And in contrast to the comparison, I guess, with the Morana Cook Dam that just was redone, you said for a half a million, how big, wide is that?
The Morana Cook Dam is about 60-something feet across, but the spillway section where the new gate was put in is 20 feet wide. Can't exactly project costs based on those dimensional comparisons unless you're going to put the same type of gate into the Anabeska Cook Dam, because the gate at the Morana Cook Dam is an expensive type of gate. But it was appropriate for Morana Cook because the spillway, the dam was shorter, it's a narrower opening, a narrower stream there, and the volume of Anabeska, of Morana Cook Lake is far greater than Anabeska Cook. So you needed to have a very different kind of gate at Morana Cook.
So Wendy, is, if you could kind of just talk about the, how labor intensive is the Anabeska Cook Dam with, in regards to management? And I have a follow-up after that.
So right now, it's not too labor intensive because the water doesn't go down very often for the Monmouth Public Works crew to actually be able to do anything there. So when they have to go and take boards out though, then it's a, it's, it's a matter of safety concern, and it, it takes a couple of people to lift those boards up. It's kind of a hard manual job.
Would, would installing a gate, mechanized gate relieve that, or would they still, they would still have to show up and?
Right, the frequency of visits to the dam to take action would increase. The work involved with doing something at the dam would be much easier.
Easier, right.
Yeah, and safer.
And safer.
And much more accurate, you could do what you, get closer to what you wanted to accomplish.
And I don't know if the town manager might want to address this, but do you, are there any policies and procedures in place for the public works that manages, or does this work?
That is definitely a question for the Monmouth Town Manager, Justin Poirier.
Good evening, I'm Justin Poirier, the town manager of Monmouth. I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat your exact question?
Yeah, do you, do you know of any policies and procedures that are in place for the public works, for when they have to draw down, or how they respond to Wendy's request? And then the actual, you know, going down and drawing it down, when or how that decision gets made?
There are not any, any, any written policies. We rely heavily on Wendy's opinion about when, when the lake level should be drawn down and when it should be boarded back up. In this case, we can't do very much in either direction. But for example, with the dam we can control around Cockawoggin, our Cockawoggin Lake, we rely on Wendy to tell us at what time of the year we should, we should start lowering that and when we start raising the gate to flood it back up for the summer voting season.
I kind of misunderstood your question, Aaron. I thought you meant for the public works crew what they actually did when they got there.
Kind of entails both. So say, you know, you do have debris built up on the dam itself, does the public works have the ability to actually address that safely within their scope of work?
So the Anabeska Cook Dam is tricky because it doesn't have any overhead structure.
Right.
So like I think you, you may or may not have seen in my email that I wrote to one of you who asked a question, I can't remember which one you did that, but the Woodbury Pond Dam has a structure up over the top of it, so there's an ability for you to either use a winch system or, or even drive on it on the Woodbury Pond Dam. This dam is, is out off of the shore, if you've been there before. There's no ability to use vehicles, there's no overhead structure, there's nothing. So it's, it's, it's manual labor with a pole pulling a board out.
Assuming it's safe.
And that's under pressure from the, from the water going downstream, it's impossible. You have to rely on the water being low enough to be able to pull the boards out. You can't use anything else to help. So it's very manual, you know, human beings pulling wood out of water when it's under pressure.
Ken, is that?
Yeah, Ken has a lot of history with this lake.
So hey, I'm Ken Ackley, Monmouth Select Board, and been on the lake since, well, since I was Bill's height.
Oh, thanks.
We've had, we've actually had some instances when employees have been put in danger. We had, we had about 10 to 15 years ago, one of our public works crew didn't hook a board quite right. The hook came loose, off he went, went for a swim. Fortunately, no one was hurt. But it's pretty realistic to think that this is a safety issue with the way that the dam's come over.
James, questions? Questions for Wendy. And it kind of relates back to what Shannon was describing, and I'm looking at your chart and trying to understand because I know we're trying to solve the dam issue right now, which is probably down the road, right? It's gonna take a while before we can figure this out.
Right, we're talking about getting started.
Yes, exactly. But this is not helping the lake levels today. Where I see Torsey and Morana Cook both have room for expansion for us to close that to alleviate some of the flooding in some of the high water marks on Anabeska right now, if we would change those dam levels a little bit, wouldn't it help downstream? But I'm talking about today, because I'm trying to get the lake quality better today. And I know we're gonna look future down the road for dam, but that's not gonna help today.
Right, so we do this in some ways. For example, after the rain that we got this weekend, Morana Cook came up six inches from, let's see on this graph. But we didn't make a change at Morana Cook to open to let more water out. We're just letting, more water is going out, the flow is faster because it's going over the top. But we didn't make a change in the gate setting to purposely discharge that water because the level at Morana Cook, you know, had some room to play with. So we are taking that into consideration and not just, as one dam operator at one time said there, their method was just to let her rip. And we're not doing that.
Yeah, and also with Torsey too, right? Because that's, that's the head of Morana Cook, so if we could somehow get that, that looks like it has some expansion as well, more than Morana Cook.
So Torsey Pond operator does, let me know what he's thinking of doing before he does it. And so we negotiate a bit, and he says he's gonna open six inches, and I say, oh, there are four. And, well, we do, we do talk about it like that and just takes that into consideration. He knows that what he does there affects Morana Cook. At the same time, Torsey Dam, a change there. They can open a foot, and if you wanted to pass all that water, Morana Cook, you'd only have to open Morana Cook a third of a foot. So they can make some changes at Torsey, and we don't have to do a lot at Morana Cook, and sometimes we don't do anything.
I think it'd be helpful for Anabeska right now, if you guys kind of look into that, because, you know, by the time we get a study for the dam, and maybe they're gonna clean some of that debris out and get the water level to come down on Anabeska would help. And if we're gonna control it from up, upstream, might help a little bit for, for the hair now.
And we also have, like our drawdown goal for Morana Cook is only a foot below full pond, whereas Cabusseau Lake and some of the other lakes, it's much greater than that. So we are trying to have a, you know, a really big drawdown on Morana Cook, so it does help Anabeska also.
Council, why?
Wendy, can you just speak also to the district's authority as far as it goes for the dam operators? You have no authority over them to make a requirement, drawdown or hold or whatnot, correct? You're only in advisory capacity?
No, actually, we do have authority granted by the legislature, and that's why we have established water level standards for each season, and it's a broad range that the water should be kept between, you know, a low and a high level. But those standards are enforceable, should we choose to do that, and the dam operators know that, so they try to adhere to the standards. Within those standards, because it is a large range, we've learned, you know, what, what we would really like, so we'll suggest, okay, within these winter standards, it would be good to keep it at such and such a level, as close to it as you can. That's not, that's not exactly a requirement, we're staying within the standards, it is a legal document.
And what would be the mechanism if you came across an issue with one of the dam operators? What would you or the district do?
So we communicate with them all the time, so now most of the dams are, are not owned by private entities, and when our standards were established, more than were. And so that was a way to sort of have them recognize that the towns and the lake residents, you know, were being affected by what their private industry did. Now, most of them are owned by towns, some are like, one is owned by a lake association, so it's easier to have a cooperative, communicative approach. So that's what we do.
Go ahead, Brett.
I have a question. What is the, like, a, who, who does it, Anabeska Cook in particular? Who, who does the, the maintenance of keeping them clean? What is, what is the period that they check them in? You know, how often is it checked? And at what point do, does somebody step in and clear the debris from the front edge of the dam?
So I'm going to answer that a little, and then I'll ask Justin to help out with that. So, for example, when I go to the dam and make observations, if I see something that is in front of the dam that wasn't there before, I'll notify the public works director so that they're aware of it. Oftentimes, they already are, but I will let them know that there's a new tree or log or something there. And then it's up to them as to when they could get down there and, and take care of that, and I don't know if Justin would like to add anything to that.
I think that pretty much sums it up. The crew goes by all of the dams and the spillways that were responsible for taking care of, they check on them. Wendy's often out there, more often than anybody else, for various reasons, measuring the water levels and all the other things that she does, and she communicates to us when there are issues. Our, our crew cannot go out into the middle of the lake in, in January when the, when the water is, you know, 25 degrees or 33 degrees or whatever it might be at that given time, they can't, they can't wade in there to get that out. So sometimes there is a period of time where there will be debris there, we're aware of it, but we're not, we're also not gonna pull it out. And we have, we have major rainstorms and the, the lake level rises a foot or two feet. You can only imagine the amount of debris that's dragged off of shore and then ends up flowing down those waterways. Like this winter was difficult because we didn't have a real, you know, nobody could ice fish this winter for any real period of time. So you can imagine the amount of lake level that's risen and then all of the, all of the branches and trees and everything that gets dragged off the shore gets, gets shoved down in there. So we are aware when there is debris in there, and we take care of it when we can.
The public works director did mention to me about some of the things I've reported. Some of the things I've reported on, to the public works director about Anabeska, he has responded that we can't do it now, it's too difficult, but we will do it in the future. So there is a lag time there sometimes at Anabeska if the water is high, and it's just...
Is the Anabeska Cook a, a dam where you actually, they actually wade in to take care of it, or is it done from the dam?
It's usually done from the platform above to the, that's what I've witnessed and known of. So the public, Monmouth Public Works Crew was very responsive. At the dam at Cockawoggin Lake, it's a totally different situation, and it's easier to clear the debris. So it's often a call and say, oh, that got plugged up with leaves again since we last talked, and they'll say, we'll go right down and take care of it. So it's a matter of the difference in difficulty due to the physical conditions there. So, you know, that could be looked into for, you know, what to do for renovation to make that easier. I don't know what the answer would be. Debris during floods, you know, debris will build up and it can block the water.
It's a likely situation in any dam. I mean, that's why they, you go up to Skowhegan and look at the dam on a kettleback, they have a whole buggy that rides back and forth to clear the dam. It clears it.
It's the overhead structure, right?
Yeah.
So that would be something I would implore to look at, would be the overhead.
Well, like the overhead, yeah. Somebody else would be better at figuring out what that solution is, but there could be some improvement to something they could do overhead, but it doesn't lend itself to the situation at the Woodbury Pond Dam where there's a road and you can park a truck right in front of it. One of the recommendations of the state dam inspector is that putting a new gate into the Anabeska Cook Dam a little closer to shore, a little closer to the embankment, you don't want it right at the embankment because you don't want the water to erode it all away, but a little closer so it'd be easier for public works to get to would be a good idea.
Have you solicited a engineering firm to give you a consult or an estimate on what they propose it would cost to fix it the way you want?
That would be part of the study that would be done with the money from the Community Resilient Partnership grant. Do you want to add anything to that?
So, so Monmouth appropriated $10,000 in their last annual budget. We spent $5,000 to have an initial study done on the Cockawoggin Dam, which we then followed up with because there was a problem there, so we used all the money for that. But in this, in our current budget, not the one we're proposing now, but the one that we're in right now, there's $5,000 to do a dam assessment on the Anabeska Cook Lake Dam. And Calderwood Engineering, which did the work on the Woodbury Pond Dam and on our Cockawoggin Dam just this past summer, is engaged, and they are, they were, they were either gonna be there this past week or this week to give us a high-level analysis for the grant applications. They were gonna give us an idea of what they thought, also in consultation with the state dam inspector and what's, what's that firm that does the, the diving?
The Commercial Divers.
The Commercial Divers Incorporated, they worked for us on, on Cockawoggin, on the Cockawoggin Dam as well. And they were gonna give us kind of a high-level idea of what they thought the solution might be and give us some estimates, so when we applied for the grant, we'd have a little more cap than our application. That was, that was our plan at this time. But yes, we have engaged an engineering firm, but I don't have anything from Wendy to share.
Anything else from the council? Good. All right, well, thank you very much for coming and discussing.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy.
Item 31, consideration of awarding contracts to Pro Audio-Visual Systems and to Sierra Communications in response to a request for proposals for audiovisual design build in the all, in the all-purpose meeting room and Bailey Public Library. Is there a suggested motion?
I move to approve the contracts with Pro AV Systems and Sierra Communications for audiovisual design build in the all-purpose meeting room and the Bailey Public Library.
I'll second it.
All right, is there a discussion? Yeah, I mean, the...
Of this ARPA money, the 197, I mean, I don't, I, I'm in favor of putting, you know, upgrading our, our facilities here in, in the town. But for the library, I mean, that's, I, I kind of have a hard time with that. I, I'm okay with using that money for our, the town's, you know, AV system and everything. But for the, for the library, I mean, what are we talking for? How much, we're talking $50,000?
Well, so this is really sort of a three-part recommendation. And I think we all realize that the All-Purpose Room has great value for us as an organization, particularly for council meetings. And so, given the scope of that, we thought that that is something that needs to be addressed by an outfit that is expert when it comes to AV systems.
Right.
So for this space that we're in right now, we think, again, given the types of events that happen here, its usage, the size of it, we think that it too deserves the sort of approach that Pro AV could give to this size space. However, we would make that contingent upon our getting a grant. And we have found a grant program that we think we would have a very good shot of, of paying for this space without any tax dollars being involved at all. So that's the second part. And then the third part is the meeting room that's at the back of this room, where I think the library trustees typically meet. And again, we see value in doing that. And so what we're recommending is we feel very comfortable with Sierra doing that project, but at a cost not to exceed the cost that they quoted us. Because Rich and I have some ideas about how we might decrease the cost of that somewhat. And so that's at most a $14,000 cost that we would use ARPA funds for. The All-Purpose Room, we're definitely recommending ARPA funds for. And I, I need to make one correction to this that Shannon reminded me of. Is that $197,000 is actually $177,000? Because remember, we also set aside a $20,000 contingency for the library elevator project.
Okay. So Anthony, I'm just looking at the proposal here. I'm just trying to get the numbers in my head correct. It looks like you're totaling $148,704 for all three spaces.
That sounds about right.
When you slide down here for the All-Purpose Rooms, I'll call it 60, it's 57.
Right.
Eight, and then you're looking for 50 to do this room.
From grant money?
From, from grant money. So, and then you're saying that's $14,000 to that, to add a third room? That doesn't.
Well, we want to say, well, and that's, I mean, frankly, one of the reasons why we wanted to go with Pro AV for the All-Purpose Room is Sierra's proposal for the All-Purpose Room was like $15,000. And we thought, you know, we weren't comfortable that the equipment that was being recommended for that space would have been adequate for that. And so what we're saying is, if you approve this, it would be at its cost not to exceed $14,000. And again.
That, and, and also this room, if we don't get the grant, we don't do it?
Correct.
So then really what we're talking about is maybe $57,802 to do the, the All-Purpose Room. But I still don't see where it adds up to $148,704.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it's $123,000 with all those.
Done some math, I still don't, I don't see where the math adds up.
No, no, so, okay, so, so the $148,000, that was if we had Pro AV do all three spaces. We're not, we're not proposing that Pro AV handled the library.
They came out and gave a presentation to us?
Right, I remember doing that. I just, I guess, if we're, if we're, a motion here, what are we, what's the dollar value that we're actually talking about?
So, so for, for ARPA funds, it would be the $57,802 and not to exceed $14,123.
Okay.
On the back page.
And awarding it only on contingency, contingent on the fact that they're going to obtain a grant. Yes.
This space would be grant contingent.
Right.
So it would just be the, will we be on the hook for us like a 14 and a 57?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks, that's, thank you. Do you need a motion revised?
So what I'm thinking about is what's wrong with what we have here now? Why do we have to spend more money? I think we're doing pretty good tonight.
Well, respectfully disagree. I don't think this is, this is optimal, but.
Well, there's 6,000 of us and maybe we don't need optimal.
Well, but, but, but this, but this, this space, again, no tax dollars would be involved. So we're not doing this space if no tax dollars are involved. I think we saw at the last meeting how problematic our AV system is in the All-Purpose Room right now. We've got, we've got a monitor that doesn't work real well. We've got a mini owl that's, a mini owl really truly should be accommodating a space the size of, of that room in there. And so we just don't think that what we've got right now is adequate and it's going to take more than $15,000 in order to, to make that space.
Well, let Andy just finish real quick and then we'll go to Linda.
You kind of switched subjects on me, Anthony. I was not speaking about what we're going to do over at the All-Purpose Room. I was speaking about the money, grant money we might spend here. Okay, I said, this seems to be doing the job for this meeting. Why do we need to spend more money here? In this room, in this space, with the number of people it can hold, it seems to be working reasonably well. The other thing comes into this is we're at about 10% contingency funding on the elevator, right?
Yes.
And that's not enough money for that. So we need to have some, a little bit of extra money for the round, for the naps.
But this grant program, this Hometown Grant Program isn't, can't be used for an elevator, correct?
That is true.
And so it's, we're only applying for something it can use for.
And again, let me make clear that this space, the space that we're sitting in right now would involve no tax dollars, should be totally grant-funded, contingent upon our getting the grant.
What are they doing in that room for $14,000?
Uh, well, Jim, you're here, do you want to, you want to address that?
Sure, I wasn't 100% prepared, but, so I'm James Corgan with Sierra Communications. We're a main business, we're, our main office, we're located here in Winthrop. We also have offices in Bangor. We do IT, networks, computers, telecommunications, phone systems, cameras, that type of thing. For this project, we, we quoted what I would call like an out-of-the-box, like Logitech solution. Logitech's the brand. So it's not a big fancy custom-built system like AV systems can do. But, but for a room like that, they use that for, like you said, like, like board meetings and that type of thing. So it's, it's basically like a Logitech-designed Teams room or what they call a Zooms room where they.
It's a tap-and-go? Is it tap-and-go, the Logitech tap-and-go?
Yeah, that type of thing, yeah. They, they've got the, the tap board and, and so it's got a, like a self-contained system that'll run cameras. It's going to have a, a big widescreen TV in the front, what they call a rally bar underneath it that has built-in camera and built-in speakers. We're going to have some kind of like conference room mics on the, on the table. And I, I believe there was going to be another camera that could zoom in on individuals, that type of thing. So we, we were quoting Logitech products and then the installation and setup.
And I think Jim described it perfectly when he said out-of-the-box because that's where we think that there may be some cost savings involved if we can shop around for the best possible price for that equipment. Because it's not custom equipment like a.
Well, it's designed for, it's designed for Teams-type meetings and I'm very familiar with them. You know, they are in the lower end, but they are very effective, so.
Yeah.
Cost-wise, I mean, you don't have to go crazy on them. And that, usually the rally bar or the soundbar is not usually equipped, you know, you have to put in the mics, especially for that size room probably in there. I got meeting rooms that we installed in that are about this size and, you know, I'm going from around six to eight, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, they recommend sixteen, twelve, sixteen.
And we do have a couple of tech-savvy people who work in the library. So they think they can do part of the setup.
Sure.
And we'll, we'll need Sierra's help for, for some of it as well.
And if I remember in Richard's presentation, they do like a lot of intra-facility of the libraries and stuff too, right, through there and they.
Are you talking about Pro AV?
No.
No, 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 no. Oh, yes, yes, yes. And that they would also be able to do like other plug, is that true? Plug in like a university system if there was something special going on and they had more classes or something.
Yeah. Talking to Richard, they do a lot more in this room.
Yeah.
That, that like you're talking about for that grant money. They're looking at a drop-down screen and being able to have group meetings and stuff in here more than you would, than you're doing just right here. This room would have a lot of multi-purpose.
I don't know, I don't know about that. But, but yeah, so keep in mind that, for instance, we have the ukulele group.
Yeah.
And there are some people who participate in the ukulele remotely. And so the system that we're proposing for this space, we think would, would help to, remote participation in events like that.
Anything else for me? Thank you.
All right, I'd like to revise the motion that's on the floor. With the following parameters. Move to approve contracts with Pro AV Systems in the AR, ARPA and BPL Meeting Rooms and the library contingent with the library on the award of the Hometown Grant Program. Is that all right, Anthony?
And then continue on the back, James.
Yeah, so, so.
So the All-Purpose Room and the Bailey Public Library Meeting Room. So it wasn't ARPA.
Yeah.
That was a, All-Purpose Room and the Bailey Public Library, the Meeting Room. And then also with the.
It's called the Harrington Room, if you want to be specific.
Harrington?
Harrington Room.
Okay.
And that's Sierra versus Pro AV.
Correct. No, no, so, so it would be the All-Purpose Room and the, this event meetings, this event space would be to Pro AV. That Harrington Room would be to Sierra.
That was his question, if that room would be Sierra.
And the Sierra.
All right, I move to approve contracts with Pro AV Systems in the All-Purpose Room and Harrington Room in the Bailey Public Library, contingent on the award of the Hometown Grant Program.
Second. So we have a, right, all in favor? All are in favor.
And, and just as a follow-up note, so we have to the end of this year to appropriate all of our ARPA funds. So they have to be appropriated this year and then they have to be spent no later than the end of 2026.
So now with that, though, just give me, give a quick update. Where are we at with the grant from Hometown to do this room?
We haven't, we haven't applied yet because we wanted approval before we started on.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Moving on to our next item, 32, Discussion of the Main Department of Economic and Community Development Housing Grant Opportunity. And we have received the information here. Give a little bit of background.
Sure, so actually, I want to thank Stephen McDermott for first calling our attention to this grant opportunity. And so he sent us a link and we explored it. And we thought right away that there might be something that we could, we could do with this. The grant's being offered by the Main Department of Economic and Community Development in order to encourage and support the construction of additional workforce housing for low and moderate income households. Now, again, when we talk about low-income households, we're not talking about subsidized housing. We're talking about housing that may be built with the help of some sort of federal tax credits. Is that fair to say, Stephen? That would then have to be sold to people who meet certain income parameters. So, so there, the grant application listed 13 desired outcomes, one of which is to increase housing options and opportunities on a regional basis. And so, much to Stephen's credit, he proposed this idea. He was thinking big, which I like. And so we invited the town managers from Reedfield and Manchester to come and meet with our town planner, Dawn Emerson, and Stephen and I to talk about, you know, what we might be able to do. Because if we team up with the other two communities, we can get up to $175,000 as opposed to $50,000 that we could qualify for individually. And so we came up with sort of a three-pronged approach. Number one would be assessing the land use ordinances in, in all three communities and aligning those to help guide housing developments across those communities. Number two would be standardizing and streamlining regulations and regulatory processes so that, you know, they were very similar in all three communities. And number three was identifying undeveloped tracts for suitable development for, for affordable housing. We would also, as part of that, identify in each community-specific perspective projects for development or redevelopment. And, and one of the things that we talked about in Winthrop was a mixed-use redevelopment of our mill space, which I think, you know, we're all interested in. So again, we could qualify for up to $175,000 and, with this grant application. We would use that to hire a consultant to, to carry out what I just described, performing the assessment, making recommendations. And then this is key too, at the end of it, we would actually have a plan that we could hand to prospective developers and say, okay, here's some places in our community where we, that we've identified as being ripe for affordable housing development. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions. Dawn is here and Stephen is here and I know we'll, we'll do our best to answer questions.
All right, go ahead, Linda.
What's to say that you have, a developer comes in and develops, you know, a huge complex? What's to say that the, down the road, that that's not going to change with respect to who can? Could it be GA? And could it be the housing development you're seeing down in Brunswick right now being put up?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that. But again, you know, I, I think we're talking less about apartment complexes than we are actual housing units.
Is this housing or apartments?
Yeah, do you want me to just?
Yeah, please, Stephen.
I would amend Linda's question to housing apartments or condos?
Hey, everybody, how you doing? Steve McDermott, this is in Winthrop. So when we're talking about, and thanks for the question, when we're talking about housing units in this, broadly from the Housing Opportunity Program, it can be homeownership or rental, and it can be really any type of building type. So when we think about condos, it's really similar to apartments, except you own them, or single-family homeownership. There's a couple new programs through Main Housing, the Affordable Home Ownership Program, which makes housing, which incentivizes developers to create single-family homeownership opportunities for households that earn up to around the 120% of area median income. So it can be that homeownership side, or it could also be rental units. So the Rural Affordable Rental Housing Program makes rental units and generally apartment-style housing available for households that earn up to 80% of area median income. And for Kennebec County, the area median income that then gets adjusted for household size is $80,000, so 80% of that or 120% of that. But this could also be for properties that are developed using federal or state tax credits, which is then rented by households earning up to 60% of area median income or 50% of area median income.
But is, it's, it's income up to that? But what I'm saying is, can, will, do some of these units qualify for GA? And for, you know, what, again, what you're seeing down in Brunswick?
Every housing unit across the state qualifies, can be qualified for general assistance.
So anything can be qualified?
So your, your home, like a single-family home, the home you live in?
Right.
You could access general assistance to pay for that, up to a certain amount that is set. So, but there's no program that develops. And most housing projects that are developed with tax credits have applicant verification that makes sure that households are able to pay for that.
But do keep in mind, the, these, this grant and these programs are for workforce housing. So if you have a job, you are not going to qualify for general assistance. Because right now, the threshold for qualifying for general assistance is that your income cannot exceed $819 per month here in Kennebec County.
And I think just to tie that back, so then you would, you would likely be screened out of and owner-manag, managers' tenant qualifications.
So Stephen, in a multifamily scenario, how likely is it that you would have some of those units that would be affordable housing and some of them that would be rented or sold at market rate?
Yeah, I, I don't have the exact statistics, but some of the more, some of the more frequent utilizers of the tax credit program that's administered by Main Housing are advocates of mixed-income housing. Some developers only develop mixed-income housing, which means that some apartments are rented at market rate and some are then funded by equity access through the tax credits, which means there's an income cap for households earning at 60% of area median income. I think it's helpful to talk about who is a household earning 60%. I think it's helpful to talk about who is a household earning 60% of area median income. Most of our first-year teachers, most of our employees at Hanaford, most of our, you know, could be our firefighters or EMS staff. I don't know what Winthrop salaries are there, but that is in other communities who access 80%, housing restricted to 80% or 60%. But it could also be individuals who are on a fixed income. So seniors often are talked about in that category, who want to downsize from a single-family homeownership but remain within their community and currently black those out.
But at the market rate, that's not affordable housing.
No, but that's the mixed, thanks for the line of the opportunity to clarify. So that mixed income means that some are market rate and some are restricted to households earning a certain percent of area median income.
But how much, how many are in each category?
Yeah.
It varies, right?
It depends on the size of development.
Right.
Traditionally, the tax properties that are developed with low-income housing tax credits within the state are around 40 units. The Rural Affordable Rental Housing Program is currently capped at 18 units. And in a community like Winthrop, so like Gardner, there was a low-income housing tax credit property. So affordable for households earning up to 60% of area median income was 18 units. So there's a whole variety, and that's based on site development, scale and need. But when we talk about development in Maine, I haven't done the statistics over the past five years of development, but I would assume that the average property funded with equity from tax credits is about 40 units.
Got a question from James and then Aaron.
Stephen, thanks for coming up and explaining some of this stuff because it's way over my head. But I, I, listening to Anthony's proposal, I know you guys are dreaming big, which is always good. What's the advantage in, other than getting more money, that will complicate it more when we join three other towns in getting this grant and causing waylays and not getting it pushed through versus just taking that $50,000 grant and running with it and do as what we want versus trying to get the extra eight or whatever is off the top because we're splitting it three ways, 175. I mean, I just, just can you kind of give us, and what can we, what can we do with that grant money? Can we develop the mill with, you know, homes or do something? What would that look like?
Yeah, thanks for the question. So I think if, if, I'll start in a world.
Yeah.
Where we can do the same level of assessment, scale down at that cost. One of the things that you can do from a regional approach, and that's proposed here, is ensure that housing isn't incentivized or disincentivized across community. So one of the things, you know, we are on a 202 corridor, and we don't necessarily want to over-incentivize development so developers don't look at Manchester.
Right.
And ensuring that we have, you know, we don't necessarily, we shouldn't have the same zoning ordinances and rules and zones as Manchester and Reedfield. But what we should be mindful of is creating rules and regulate, regulations and processes that say, come here or don't come here compared to our neighbors. That's one incentive, I think. And one, one option that we'll bring to the table is whoever does this work may be able to offer guidance on how we can partner with our neighboring communities to ensure that we have the right amount of housing for our, you know, multi-municipal area, multi-municipal region, and it not all being clustered in one spot. I think that's one.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's one. And the other is, is that there's the ability to partner and say, here are different resources and tools that you can do. So taxing incremental financing, so one community isn't necessarily over-leveraging it, but all communities are looking at how to use it as a tool. The other thing is that by standardizing process, and that's not necessarily making them the same, but by standardizing how they're implemented, we will have three local planning boards and zoning ordinances and planners who can then lean on each other and increase learning while each community goes through. Because they may not be the same, but they'll be similar and started from the same place, right? So same concepts and beliefs so that they can say, what happened here? What didn't work? And we're increasing our learning opportunities across three towns.
Jim, I would add to that. It's good for our neighbors, it's good for us. And that's particularly true for Reedfield because when we talked with the Reedfield Town Manager, he said that the citizens there look to Winthrop to be their regional service center. So that means more shopping, jobs, more eating out.
Just was trying to make sure, didn't you make it too sticky to waylay the whole process and deciding how we're going to spend the grant money?
No, and I did, well, and, and that's a fair question. And so it wouldn't be divided into thirds. What we're proposing to do is spend $100,000 of that doing the assessment and the recommendations, and then $25,000 for each community to then identify a specific development or redevelopment project. And, and I think, you know, it makes sense to sort of develop this three-community region as a place that developers are looking to because activity begets activity.
Activity begets activity and then prices go up.
Well, I mean, but, but, but listen, what have we been talking about for the last several months?
Oh, I know, but I'm just, you know.
The need for more housing and affordable housing and senior housing. And this is an opportunity to develop a tool that can help achieve that.
I don't know if Dawn might want to put in for your shoe. Can you address the regional side? Meaning the 100,000 funds requested from the, you know, what? What is going to be different about that than the specific, just on that part? And then the second is, would there be something, because this is going to be consultant-based, and where are we getting a report essentially, correct? And recommendations? Is, would there be, you might not know the answer to this, but you can probably guess, but would there be anything to talk about fair, you know, competition between the towns? Say you do have someone that comes in that wants to do it. We each have a identified place for housing. Would that be addressed in this? Because I, you know, picking expectations versus reality and don't want to look down the line and seeing and having to compete with each other. Yeah, thanks for the question, Councilor Wayne. I think I'll start in the middle, actually. So, so those two parts are separate and distinct and impact. The first, the standardization and the regional approach impacts that second part, which is when you look at a localized housing plan, which can identify areas like Manager Wilson mentioned, the redevelopment of the mill or increasing mixed-use development downtown. So the first, where you're standardizing and looking at your existing ordinances and regulatory processes can impact the second. But the second should really be a specialized, you know, a specialized and unique look at your municipality and saying, what are the areas that we could, that may be appropriate for the development of housing which can lead to the increased affordability of housing across the market segment? So I think that's a big part. So they should be separate and distinct. I think I'll leave municipal procurement questions to our municipal staff, but I think that's a wonderful perspective to add.
Do you want to say something, Pat, before I chime in?
To answer Linda, you know, part of our problem, this is Pat Lad, sorry.
Hey, Pat, will you come to the microphone so our online audience can hear you?
Roy, did you have a question?
I did, yeah, I just called him.
Hi, Pat Lad. To answer part of your question, Linda, what has happened since COVID? We have had a tremendous lack of inventory. And whether it's housing in rental section or the ownership section, and when you have a lack of inventory, you can ask whatever you want. So that's what's happening in that, prices are going up dramatically. That's what's happening in houses, prices are going up dramatically. I think if we had more inventory created, that would help tamp that down because we just don't have the inventory period.
And Aaron, to answer your question, just about, you know, what would we get for that $100,000? Again, it's the assessment of all of our land use ordinances across all three communities, all of our regulatory processes, so that we could try to streamline and standardize those. So let's just say, for instance, right now, that there are lessons to be learned from Reedfield that might help quote-unquote breeze the skids for developers here in, in Winthrop. Well, you know, that was, that's beneficial to us. And then lastly, to actually provide a plan that we can hand to developers. Like, remember the fellow who came to some of our meetings and he was really interested in developing some affordable housing? It'd be nice to be able to hand him a tool. Here's some opportunities here in Winthrop for you to do exactly what it is that you're, that you're talking about.
Roy, you had a question?
Yeah, one question I had, I look at this and I look at everything that this grant, this $100,000 is going to get us. Isn't this real similar to what we just went through for the last year and a half with the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Isn't that the exact same stuff that we just put all this work in?
No, let me tell you why. Because, because the comprehensive plan gives you an outline for doing that, but it doesn't actually do it. So this is, this is where, that's a plan. This is where rubber meets the road. We say, okay, we know we, for instance, need to find ways to help facilitate housing development, particularly for working families and for seniors. This is helping to, I think, meet some of the policies or strategies that may be adopted in the comprehensive plan. So I don't know if I'm explaining that clearly enough, but this is, this is, this is the devil that will be in the detail of the comprehensive plan.
I guess my concern is that we don't take and, that we still steer the ship in the direction of what we're, what we put all the effort in with the comprehensive plan. And, and not, not turn the ship around due to the other communities. You know, not, you know, go with a completely different idea in order to blend in with the other communities and create one regional flag.
I don't really see it that way, do you, Dawn? You want to get up and explain?
Yeah, I'll take a moment while Dawn's coming up here to potentially support this or tell me I'm wrong. But I, but, Councilor Wayne, thanks for, again, this opportunity. I think to make distinct one was a really long, community-involved process through the comprehensive planning process that said, here are our values, our ideals and where we see ourselves going, as well as here are some challenges like 40% of our renters are rent burdened, paying more than 30% of their income on rent. And the average rent in, the median rent in the first $862. So really, our most vulnerable community members are being, are rent burdened and don't have potentially choice like Pat mentioned. But what I see this as, as a second process that could be potentially in parallel to some of the things that were mentioned. I think our comprehensive plan committee, many of the, some of the members who are here tonight did a really good job thinking big. And then also saying, here are some solutions, not just finding like a broad topic. So I see this really as in parallel or supplementary and complementary to that process and not saying, well, you did this work and we're finding something else. It could be the opportunity to refine that. And, you know, if we find something that's opposite, it could cause a moment of reflection and thinking about, what did we think we know? What are we being told now and where's the truth?
In a broad sense, and in respect to the comprehensive plan that you've already adopted, a lot of the goals and objectives in the plan speak to regional collaboration in a very general way. So this is actually implementing the regional piece of that, I believe. It is specifically on that.
Yeah, one, one correction, we haven't yet adopted the plan, but we'll talk about that during the Town Manager's Report.
Now, I see the deadline for submitting the grant application is Thursday?
That's correct.
All right.
And, and I will say that there will be no direct financial cost to the town. That doesn't mean that Dawn and I and the planning board won't be working with the consultant in order to make this happen, but there's no direct financial cost. So you folks wanted us to apply for grants? Here we are.
So you don't have a suggested motion? Is this just something you want?
Well, because I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure sort of where this conversation was going to go. And so I don't know that we necessarily need a motion, but if you guys want to sort of ratify this, then, then we're happy.
As well, submit it, we can make it.
There's a question.
Have Reedfield and Manchester said yes to this?
They, yes, they want to participate. Now, they haven't gone through this process yet, but, but both their town managers told us, yeah, we want to do this, go for it. And so we're, we're sort of taking the lead on this. We've completed the grant application. Steve has provided some input on that that's been very helpful. And in fact, on Friday, I sent him some more information. He told me, yeah, looks good, let's go for it. And so we could, we could submit this as soon as tomorrow.
Do we have to?
No, we don't have to.
We don't have to.
Just consensus?
Consensus.
Good? Okay, we have a consensus. Go ahead. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Pat. All right, moving on to item 33. Discussion of wage increases for non-union employees in fiscal year 2025. And included in our packet, we received the results of a main municipal association salary survey for towns of 4,000 to 8,000 in the following counties of Kedebek, Franklin, Oxford, and Descoggin, Sagatoh, Lincoln, Knox and Waldo. They show wages by position, both hourly and total salary, benefits, and along with how the town of Winter compares. Now, reading through the MMA salary survey data, I believe our municipal staff are compensated well in both wages and benefits. While I find it challenging to keep a low and even flat budget, I do feel it's important to acknowledge our employees and the value and dedication of them. So I'd like to recommend that we designate an amount of money for our town manager to do the job that we have hired him to do and assess the performance and allocate increases as he sees fit. So essentially, a pool of money. And we'd be open to have a discussion. I believe our town manager is looking for guidance on how to budget for those wages. If anyone wants to discuss.
The process as well? So I just, just clarify, it's, it's a, it's a pool of money to disperse as he sees fit and know this, but with no cost of living, correct? No cost of living.
This is a discussion, so that's.
My, my intent would be that, that the amount of money would be disseminated based on merit.
Yes.
And so that means that some people will get raises, some will not. Some will get higher raises, some will get lower raises.
We'll see that process.
Here's, here's the thing. Here's the thing with that is there can be substantial raises where there's already been substantial raises in the last two years. And I, I think that, you know, I think that's opening up a whole can of worms. We have huge salaries here. If you're looking at the other towns, our, our employees are making well above what most of these people are making. And, you know, when you're doing that, if you want to give a 6% or an 8% raise to one of these folks, that is going to jack up those salaries even more. And we've always done that through the budget process. And I, you know, to me, I just think you're, you're opening up a whole can of worms here.
Well.
I mean, we're, we, you know, the salaries have been, they have had exceptional raises over the last two years, exceptional. So in, in my opinion, I'm not going there anymore. I mean, I've already been there, I'm not going there anymore. I, I can't even believe some of the raises that we've given out in this, in this town. And it's been at the expense of the taxpayer that's been paying for this. And now we're going to be saying, well, you can give a 10% raise to somebody. You can give a 2% raise to this person. I understand the merit system, but I think this is, this is, it's going to cost us in the end.
So I'm not anticipating that the council would provide such a pile of money that people would be able to get 6% and 7% and 8% and 10% raises. So that's, that's not my expectation at all. And, you know, I think it's, there's, so we're limited by our collective bargaining agreements when it comes to those requirements. But for people who are not in the union, there's a difference between equality and equity. Equality is giving everyone the same raise, regardless of the job that they do, regardless of their experience, regardless of the value that they bring to the organization. Equity is when you take those sort of things into consideration, you say, okay, this person deserves 1%, this person deserves 3%, this person deserves 4%. So in my estimation, I actually think this is a fairer way to approach salaries because you're able to take into consideration value. What are they currently owning or earning? How does that compare to our peers? But mainly, what is the value that you're bringing to the organization?
So what potentially, I, I, no, I get that. I get all the equality, I get, you know, I get all that. But what I'm saying is, what are you looking for, for individual raises in some cases? I'd like to know what those figures are.
Aaron has a quick question as well.
Yeah, first comment too is, you know, I, I do see the value in being able to let you make, you know, those decisions. I would want to see the process or some, you know, result consultation to some degree, maybe even after the fact. I don't really care. Because the problem I have, and maybe Linda, you can answer because I know you've been on for a while, is that when we look at director-level positions here, it's all over the place. It is up, down, up, you know, between, you know, what we're looking at for pay. And I don't know what that's based on. I don't believe there was a merit process in the past. Linda, correct me if I wrong.
There hasn't been a merit process.
Yeah, so our longest standing in, well, I shouldn't say our longest, our longest. Yeah, so our longest standing, well, I shouldn't say our longest, our longest standing employee who was a director is Matt Burnham. He's worked for the town for thirty-three years. There's never been merit raises over the course of those thirty-three years. Well, John Davinsky's here. Twenty, twenty-eight years with the town, John?
Twenty-eight.
Any merit raises during that tenure? Okay. Now, we have no.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, so, it is a fair question. So what's, what would the process be? So I have worked with enough of these folks, you know, for, was it seven months now? Actually, in the long run, maybe eight months. So I have some idea of the kind of job that they do. For the people who are not my direct reports, and I would consult with the directors on that, we are in the process of doing performance evaluations. First time in John's career that he's ever had a performance evaluation was earlier this year as well. And so, and so as we move forward, part of determining what your raise would be, would be your performance evaluation, and whether or not you meet the goals that are established in your performance evaluation each year. So, yeah, I mean, in the private sector, you know, this thing happens. It's a standard operating procedure.
And then, in the past, was, do we know, like, where some of these raises came from? Is it just literally like, this is, like, some of these, like, the ninety-nine?
Yeah, I'll tell you where they came from.
Just percentage bumps every single time?
I'll tell you where they came from. Over the last ten years, the town managers have literally looked at four or five different communities and said, well, this is this and this is that, and we, we need to increase the raises. I guarantee you, over the last ten years, if you go back at some of the raises, and what, and, and look at what they were making and what they're making now, particularly in the last two or three years, there were fourteen percent increases, there was, and then there was a, a bonus on top of that. I mean, you're talking a lot of increases over the last several years. So, I mean, look at the figures. If you're looking at all the salaries compared to some of the other salaries in the other towns, they're substantial. But, I mean, I'm just telling you, it's, you know, it, it, it's, it, we've, 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 there wasn't any rhyme or reason to it. They just literally looked at four or five other towns and says, oh, we got to do, we got to match this, or, you know, look at these. And I'm looking at these towns now, some of them, and I didn't see these figures back then.
But we didn't even have a, I mean, how long have we had a lieutenant position at the police department that's?
Used to, Aaron, that used to be the captain.
Right, the captain's position. So that's, I mean, that's on par with a director position. I mean, some of, I, I'm just, I'm struggling to see where we would go.
Right.
From that.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Oh, yeah, Andy was on too.
Oh, Andy was first.
Doesn't matter.
I, I would like to know, first of all, I'd like to segregate the municipal increases with the fire, or the police department increases and handle that as a separate issue. Okay. I, I would like to also see, at your discretion, a fund that you control that is based on merit. And who better to administer that but the supervisor for the entire town, which is what we've hired you to do? I think merit increases, you'll find, are far less than granting everybody a, you know, three percent wage increase. And we can minimize the impact to our taxpayers, but yet again, satisfy everybody else on your side of the fence by you administering anywhere between a half to a, a three percent increase based on merit. And that would be attitude, job description, part-time efforts, that somebody might have another job and not be totally dedicated to our administration, or your administration. I think that you should control that. I mean, wage increases are inevitable. All of our town employees work very hard, and if you don't understand that, then don't go to the Hannaford, because you're going to get shot. So, I mean, there has to be something in there. But I think it should be based primarily on merit and controlled by you, you know what I mean? Not by council to appropriate a bunch of money, you know, not a lot. We're not talking about a lot of money, I don't think, for you to hand out raises that you seem appropriate.
But are these raises on top of cost of living?
No.
Go ahead, Andy.
That's one of the problems I see. We have some long-term employees that are on the higher end of the pay scale, due to their long-term employment and the cost, annual cost of living increases. And if you were to add merit on top of that, it would just be outrageous. And so how is it fair to decide that someone that gave us thirty years and has plenty of merit, you know, doesn't get a raise because they're already making a ton of more money than everybody else? I mean, I, I'm not going to work that out, Anthony.
Well, I think someone who's making a ton more money than anyone else, in my mind at least, there's very little room to complain about it, because they've been rewarded. And, and Aaron, to your question, the council has, over the years, has accrued all those raises, but it's been across the board, the same amount for everybody. And so I think what, I think, at least for people who are not part of the collective bargaining unit, what we're trying to do is really take, I mean, take all those factors into consideration as opposed just to giving someone who makes a hundred and twelve thousand dollars a three percent raise just because everybody else got a three percent raise.
You want us to give you a raise?
No. It's not what I'm saying.
Well, I agree with the merit system, as long as we cap the total funds. Okay, that's, we got to have some control.
When you say the total funds, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, what would the number be that you would anticipate in order to appropriately reward all of our non-union employees?
I think that you should have a chance to disseminate that.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm saying.
I think I'd like a chance to ruminate over that.
Right. That, that's the question. So we know, we're, we can say, okay, Anthony, you have X amount of dollars to distribute, you know.
So what's a merit, what's a merit raise?
So, so.
Because I'm your supervisor, he's not your supervisor, he's a supervisor.
Yeah. So, so what we do, in Louis's case, is we look at the job that he does and determine, and look at the pay that he's receiving for the job that he does, and determine if he brings enough value to the organization to warrant paying him more. In, in enough show, that's, that's.
Job performance.
Yeah, yeah, based on job performance, in enough show.
Who makes that decision?
Yeah, yeah.
We don't make that decision. We're talking about here tonight.
Yes.
That's what I was kind of, that's what I came here for, to see how this is going to work.
So, so Louis, in.
We always used to do it before, we went, we got what the police force got. They got three percent, they got three percent.
So, so Louis, in answer to your question, so you and I know each other.
Yeah.
And we know each other a little bit.
Yeah.
But I don't know how good of a job you do on a day-to-day basis, so I wouldn't be making that decision. In the back, we might be talking with the public works director about it.
Right, right. I mean, I've been here nineteen years, yeah, I make a good money, but I give up a lot to make that money. Last year, my father was alive. I didn't have Thanksgiving with him because I had to allow snow, keep the roads going. You know what I mean? Leaving at six-thirty in the morning on Christmas Day to go plow the road, so you guys can get to your families, not watching my children open their, their gifts and stuff. I mean, it just, it says right in the policy that every employee will be treated equal.
But, but they're not.
You know what I mean?
But, but they're not, but they're not already, because the ambulance union gets a different rate of pay than the police union that gets a different rate of pay than the, than the, than the other rank-and-file union. And so, but, but one thing that the policy does say, that has never been implemented, is that there'll be an opportunity for merit raises. And so this is a step towards that. And, and just so everyone's clear, just my own personal philosophy on this, I don't believe that money incentivizes people. I don't. I think people are who they are, and you're either self-driven to achieve, or you're just, you know, showing up and doing a job because it's, it's a way of earning a paycheck. But I do believe that merit raises reward excellent performance. And that's what we're looking to do, is we're looking to reward excellence as opposed to incentivizing people. Because I don't think the prospect of, say, a three percent raise twelve months from now is really going to motivate someone on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you, Anthony. We've got James.
Yeah, so I think, for me, and I do appreciate all that you guys do for public works, lived here my whole life, I kind of get it, I understand it. We pick our jobs, right? We do our jobs that they have. And I've had jobs that required me to go out on Christmas Day on times, and I've gone out and rode, and they weren't allowed, and, and not in this community, but just, that's just what happens. You just have to do it, because that's the job you pick.
Right.
And it lines up, that's what you have to do. I think where this is trying to align ourselves, and we look at this, and it's black and white when you look at it, and it's not trying to say we don't value you guys, because we do. But in the public sector or the private sector, you, you, there's a difference. You get a raise based on your performance. And not all the time is the money there to give that raise. I mean, some of you guys are union, you guys get that, it just happens, and that's just kind of how it goes. I've never worked for a unionized organization, so I don't really know how that goes. But I know, I worked for, for big companies before, and they just, the money's not there. And this is what, this is the bucket of money they gave my manager. You're going to have to divide it up amongst your crew, based on how you feel the value is there, and lie it down on the line. So I think that's where we're trying to make sure that we don't also come back and hit taxpayers with more, that, you know, we're trying to reward you guys over the years. This is my second budget, so I really don't, I haven't got much involvement of it, I just know that we had two increases the last two years, that we really don't want to go back there again, back to the well, to have, to listen to constituents, why are we going back up? And then when they see this, because it's public record, they can see what you guys are making, right? And say, how come do they make you so much more than a community that has more people and more, or less services and everything else? So we just have to kind of look at it and have a discussion as we are here now. Well, and I know it's getting upsetting, because it's your paycheck. I get it.
Well, I also see in that, that every town that he did a thing with is all lower. It doesn't show Gardner or Maumess or anything like that.
I think he, he proposed it to him, whoever came, came back with the material, then that's what he could give us, right?
So, so the way I look at it like that, we're the highest paid town on that whole list.
Oh, yeah.
Plus, there are other communities that are bigger than us.
Bigger communities, and they're paying lower.
Right, you know what I mean?
But we also do twice as much as the other towns. I do all the welding, I save the town a lot of money. I'm not getting paid to be a welder, but I do it, because it's my job. But like I said, you give me a raise, but you don't give him a raise, eventually I'm going to pass it. And he's been here for nineteen years.
Well, and I get, and I get that, believe me, because I, and mine is, I'm, I'm a manager at my job now, and I, I'm a salary. I get paid whatever it is, no matter what the hours I have to put in, that's what I get paid. I don't get paid. My guys come in, they get called in the middle of the night, Saturday, weekends, whatever, they're hourly. They can surpass me pretty easily, as much as they want to work, because the work's there, right? So that's just, that's the devil in the, in the job. I mean, it's.
He's hourly, he's not salaried.
I'm just saying, but that's, sometimes that's how that works, though. Sometimes he's a supervisor and he's doesn't, he's not in that union. His employee could surpass him just based on overtime and everything else that's happening, right? But I, I'm just saying, i- it's kind of the jobs we pick, and I, I'm not saying it's.
Well, overtime, we all work the same overtime. There's no.
It, it was just an analogy, mostly, just saying that that's, it can happen.
You're saying like him, but I get the ditches right beside me.
No, I didn't say it wasn't. I know, Louis, I know you, I know you guys work hard.
You know, as far as the, I don't know, just, I just was here to see what, how it was going to be done.
And, and I'm just going to try to relay some of it, is, you know, we will make sure that it's a fair process, you know, that, that there are guidelines, which is what I was trying to get at earlier, is to make sure that, you know, we see, I have no doubt that our manager is going to, you know, he's been in this for a while, right? And he's very good at it.
Who wanted to judge the basis?
Is to kind of streamline this. This is the first time this is really being streamlined. And I know I've worked in this town for quite a few years as well. So, you know, but we will make sure that it is a fair process, and that there is, you know, an avenue, say, you know, if you really feel that, you know, there's something else, then I would think that we would be able to, you know, discuss that. All right. Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you. John, hope you can see him.
No, thank you.
I'm curious, because I didn't, didn't understand. So did MMA do this salary survey, or are these MMA figures?
Figures.
Yeah, so to speak to Louis's question, so what you do with the MMA salary surveys, you set the parameters. And so we set it based on population, four to eight thousand, she had to say. And then we looked at Kinnaback County and all of the contiguous counties, with the exception of Somerset County, because it's unusual in that it goes up to the Canadian border. And then we, and then we included Oxford County as well. And so the survey is not perfect in that not every community participates in the survey. And not every community that participates fills in every position. And so, but it does give you some sense, I mean, there are still twenty-one communities in the survey, including us. And so it does give you some sense of, of where we are on that plane. And they're seeing the same survey that we saw.
That's correct.
And, and the only reason I asked that was that, as you may notice looking through it, there's no comparison for either of the most positions in that survey.
So I'm sure we can get that report for you.
Well, and, and we actually talked about it.
And then you can make comparison yourself.
Yeah.
Okay?
It's a hybrid position, so, yeah, it's, it's. And, and we, and we have some unusual animals in our organization. I mean, not, not very many communities have an ambulance jeep, because, because that department's typically folded into the, into the fire department. And we're the only community of our size that has a town planner, you know? I mean, we're, we're progressive in that sort of way. So, so it's not always an apples and apples comparison.
I guess the only other thing I have, other than thanking you guys for your support year in, year out, I mean, I know it's tough to sit where you're sitting, and these are difficult conversations to have, so appreciate the fact that you are having. I would be curious as to how the metrics for merit raises are going to be developed. I think that's a fair question, given the fact that, you know, this will be the start of my twenty-ninth year here. Sounds a lot like when you say it like that. But I'm just curious, having never done merit raises, it'd be interesting to see what that, you know, what that rigor, what that metric is going to be.
I'll come up with a whole thing.
Well, and again, it's going to be based on someone's performance evaluation, which, which, John got to be my guinea pig. He was the very first performance evaluation that I did. And he said, well, you know, well, you don't really know much, because I hadn't been here very long. He said, you don't really know much about, about the job that I do. And I said, fair enough. Well, we got to start somewhere, John. And so, and so he was the first. And he seemed to think I did an incredible job on his, on his performance evaluation. So it'd be based on performance evaluation. And then next year, you know, I'd go, okay, John, here are the, the goals that we've established for you in your performance evaluation. How'd you do in meeting those goals?
I think it would be fair to have a performance review for everybody. That's, it's kind of common practice amongst most any other job that you do out there. I'd also encourage you, and I might have mentioned to you before, is have them do a self-evaluation. It's, it's, we have to do it constantly. I've done it in all my jobs. Do a self-evaluation. Tell me what your worth is, really, right? You want to get us to put it down, and then have that discussion, then he can come up with his analysis, and you guys can come up and maybe meet in the middle, or maybe he thinks you did more than, than what you're describing. I mean, that, it just happens. That's just kind of how it is out in the workforce nowadays. I mean, I just, I think that's what I would really think you want to look at, Anthony, is, you know, is to have that. It's a performance.
Well, and just, and just so everyone is clear, when, when I do a performance evaluation, it's a dialogue.
Sure.
It's not a decree. And so.
No, I do.
And so, for instance, with John, I gave John the, the first draft. I said, if you, if there are things in here that you take exception to, let me know, we'll talk about it.
Yeah.
And that's what we did. And when, and in the development of his goals, I did not come up with his five goals.
Right.
I came up with a couple of goals. I asked him for a couple of goals. He provided those. We worked on them, tweaked them a little bit so that they were.
That's a good process.
You know, smart. And, and I think in the end, you know, we were both agreeable to that.
Okay. One other question.
Can I ask one thing? When you guys do an evaluation, could you ask all the guys that he works with, not just one person?
So, David, I, yeah, I.
I don't think you can do that.
He'll go to, he'll probably go to Louis and ask him.
He can do a non-ambulance service.
No, no, he's, I mean, when he comes over for evaluation, can you ask all the guys we work with?
For a care evaluation.
Do you do that?
I, I will coach supervisors, directors on how to do an evaluation, but I'm not going to dictate how they do their evaluation.
I just ask, I just, I just want to know.
I mean, typically, I, I do. I, I get input from, from other people about the person that I'm evaluating. And I did that with John. I said, hey, tell me how good with John, John, you think John does?
Very good.
Okay. It's cool.
Thank you.
Do we have a question? Can I ask a question as a member of the library board?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know what the rules are about public.
Is that sort of a letter, or?
Of course. I mean, as the library board, we're going to have to discuss this. So there, there are a few items that I think would help. And that's, I have no idea of what percentage of employees in Winterford are union or non-union. of employees in Winthrop are union or non-union when you say non-union are is that mostly just your supervisory management staff?
Yes for the most part we have sixteen non-union employees.
And those are the only people who will be subjected to the merit?
Well I wouldn't say they're subjected to it but.
The question being that's the what's percentage.
Maybe bad choice of words but let me also ask do you have very clear job descriptions for each one of those sixteen people?
No.
Well that's a starting point.
Yeah I agree with you.
You cannot do job evaluations and performance evaluations unless they have it in writing ahead of time.
Well there has to be a starting point.
Well yeah.
And we've gone for years without anything like that.
This is this is but the other let me tell you what worries me I feel okay I've only been on the library board for a little bit here but what I have found is I think we have a really good staff here that works together as a team and they work well with their director Richard Horton and they appreciate this library and they have a desire to provide the highest level of service and if if a merit system were put in possibly incorrectly is it worth destroying a team effort with one percent pay I I throw that out I I am concerned by that idea.
Who said one percent?
arbitrarily.
Like if you're if you're looking at giving somebody three percent or somebody else two percent I mean what are you what are you saving as a town?
I think we'd need to look at it's not been a decent process in place in this town in this community and we need to have a starting point so I think that will be up to the evaluation of the town manager and they were talking about that if he's looking at if it's a if it's a one percent and it's not it's not a big cost he will probably I trust him to make a decent decision on that.
Yeah.
So I think if you're throwing out that arbitrary number of one percent or if you're talking six percent across the board you're talking about seven three I mean the numbers can go anywhere right so but we need a we need a base to really get going on this Anthony's new year.
It sounds like what you really need is a base of an evaluation system.
Sure.
And then once you have that in place then you can talk about attaching pay consequences.
Ma'am I have to tell you I have the utmost confidence in the in our library director to determine who whom should be paid what on this the utmost confidence.
Okay so with that.
May I may I speak there's no raise your hand or whatever on here I did put in the chat may I speak but.
Yes ma'am.
As was pointed out there's only sixteen employees that we're talking about that are non-union employees there are three hundred employees in the town of Winthrop including the school and the town three hundred almost all of those employees other than these sixteen people will receive at the taxpayers' expense a minimum of two and a half percent raise to possibly five percent raise or more depending upon what the teachers' unions do so where is it that our sixteen employees half of which are department heads the other half are just non-union employees for whatever reason they're exempt non-union employees where is it that we get put aside and at least don't get considered for a cost of living raise what we thought would make sense would be somewhere between a two and a three percent raise based on cost of living that number has already been included in the budget that I have put together to present to the town manager and it is a reasonable number you're only talking twenty to forty thousand dollars for those sixteen people to get a three percent raise of course if it's less than three percent it would be less than more I'm I do not discredit that I get paid well I'm also the finance director but I took on the school business manager responsibility I know that some of my other peers John who's the EMS director who has the most employees to oversee he's the E911 addressing agent Sarah our town clerk is the registrar of voters I can go on as to what other titles some of our those sixteen people hold I ask and encourage the council to take that into consideration and to not set those sixteen people aside and not give them at least a minimum of what you feel is fair for a cost of living raise per our personnel policy that is one of the items yes merit raises are part of how the town manager is to determine our wage increase or decrease but it also we have always gotten always I've only been there for four years these other people John and Matt have been there and and Richard much longer than I but most all social security on up get a cost of living raise we have asked that we be considered for a cost of living raise the same as the other two hundred and eighty-some-on employees that are going to be paid by the taxpayers of the town of Winthrop we ask to be treated in that same manner I know I've been tossed around about a word fair I believe fair is fair I believe if all employees are going to get a cost of living raise then all employees should get a cost of living raise it should not if there's merit raises on top of that in addition to that decreasing from that that's one thing but if everybody else is going to get a two and a half percent or higher raise for at least a cost of living raise then I feel that these sixteen people should be at least considered thank you.
Thank you Bernice Karen.
And I appreciate that comment Bernice I I I think it's fair to say we do have to start somewhere and that everyone's going to be considered and that's the basis of the merit but the consideration is going to be no longer just showing up it's going to be performance based and that's something we've been lacking for a very long time so and and looking at across at the sixteen I can pretty sure a lot of these the reason why the town unions came into formation was because of the lack of across-the-board fairness to be fair so you know I I can't say that you know we can look at the unions and then put aside the sixteen others but they're different entities for a different reason right the directors are the ones that make their budgets and therefore you know they deal with their staff and so that's that's how that's gonna work but there has to be a standard that hasn't been in place so we have to start somewhere and I think this is appropriate and you might find I think that it may be far more incentivizing than just a flat two or three percent that we've been doing for however long but ultimately some of these are very generous salaries so I don't think that we've been neglecting that and choosing to do this would would not be neglecting as well and then I see your hand is up again so.
Yep this salary survey information that was presented to you I will tell you that preparing the information to enter into MMA's salary survey especially the first year is a royal pain in the neck and very time consuming there are a lot of municipalities that do not contribute to the MMA salary survey for that reason and who knows what other reasons when you're looking at that piece of paper that you're given and you're seeing that we're all paid whatever we're paid it does not include the number of years that person has worked for that town it has not included that they may or may not have the same benefits it does not include how many years of experience they came to that particular town I know for instance the town of Sabattas is their town manager has been there not a whole lot longer than our town manager has been there and he's the highest paid town manager on that list so what else incorporated for those numbers compared to our numbers as to what that dollar amount is I think that we should be considering looking at what are the other towns that did not submit to the MMA salary survey what cost of living should be a baseline and that's pretty much what I understand that the unions are because they aren't getting merit they're getting a flat three two of the unions that we have in a place right now are gonna get a three percent cost of living varied understory across the board the ambulance is in the process of negotiations so time will tell what they get teachers are in the process of negotiation but time will tell what they get I believe Richard is working on a survey that will incorporate sixteen communities that are identical to the town of Winthrop and please wait to see what the results of that survey are before we just take this benefit of a survey and say this is what we're basing it on.
All right thank you Bernice.
I can just have one quick question on her response of all the other titles that a lot of these people we did see in some of these that they held these people also held multiple titles as well correct?
Yes that's correct.
Yeah.
Okay all right so I think we can wrap up this discussion so the discussion of wage increases do we have a consensus as far as merit?
No.
Come back with some numbers?
I'd like to see Anthony come back with the process.
We have to come back with some numbers.
With a yeah like a.
So we're gonna get questions on the process no matter what so if we just nip that.
So when you say numbers are you talking about a bottom line dollar figure bottom line dollar figure for the money to to distribute?
And some generals general suggestions of of.
Some parameters.
Kind of your turn to thought.
Framework yeah.
Okay.
So you want to eliminate the cost of living and you'd sell the merits of.
I'm gonna do whatever the council tells me to do.
Well I miss what your thought is on the matter.
I respectfully disagree with Bernice I don't think someone who's earning a hundred and twelve thousand dollars should be treated the same as someone who's earning thirty thousand dollars I don't.
And and with the very handsome increases that we've had over the last few years as Linda has mentioned that is my basis for being okay with a a merit raise only.
I don't think that we have a director who's not well compensated.
May I add something else?
Is there anything else Bernice? Go ahead Bernice.
The employees across the board union and non-union got market adjustments a couple of years ago it was not just the directors it was all positions across the board so additionally they got their market adjustment they as well as the non-union and they are still getting their union adjustments each year and as James pointed out earlier you took the job that you took so the person who's making thirty thousand dollars took the job that they took the person that's making a hundred thousand dollars took the job that they took so that's where I say the fairness comes in in that it doesn't matter when you're drawing retirement social security whatever it may be they don't say oh sorry you're making a hundred thousand dollars you can't get a benefit increase so only the person that gets thirty thousand dollars can.
Bernice I was commonly know to the person gets does the job that they do but we also when we did the analysis and looking across the board somebody who may be operating truck doing X job is being paid way less in this community than maybe another one I think we're just trying to align things a little bit closer so when I say you took people took the job that they took they took it that wage but also I think we need to be fair I mean everybody did get a cost of living increase year before I got on the council and and then they also got another bump up during on covid so and if you look at the analysis there is everyone is compensated pretty well except for some of our people that are the basic laborers and I want to make sure that they kind of get in another median range so that's when I when I just said people take the job that they take and they sign up for it you you kind of do I mean but I mean you took the job that you have and you get paid X dollars right and that you you're happy with that so or if you're not then you have to find a new job if you don't want to stay you'll do something so I just I just trying to say that I understand people do work on the holidays and have to get up in the middle of the night and work overtime and do certain things but that's the profession that they chose so that's that's all I was saying the job that they took not because of the pay.
Okay all right thank you James we will coordinate or get more numbers from Anthony?
Yeah what? More information.
Yes more information from Anthony but as of right now it looks like we will go with some merit raises pending more information so.
Yeah.
Okay moving on to.
I would before we do that I would just like the number on the cost of living raises so we can compare the merit because we're gonna eliminate the cost of living right?
So so as has been discussed.
And replace with merit.
As has been discussed two of our union contracts call for three percent raises this year.
Right well we can't do it anyway.
No no I'm just saying that that would be I think what most people would consider to be cost of living adjustments now you could look at the the consumer price index for wage earners in the northeast that's another measure it's a little bit below three percent right now for the last twelve months but you know you're talking generally in that.
Well all I'm saying is after fifteen years working for the town you're gonna say you know Andy when we hire you we promise you cost of living wage every year whatever the cost of living percentage was now we're taking that away and we're gonna give you a merit raise according to our own judgment of what you're worth that's what you that's what we're thinking about doing.
I don't know that anyone's ever been promised that they're gonna have a cost of living adjustment every year.
It's been.
Okay. All right let's move on. Moving on to item twenty-six discussion of the town manager's job description it was tabled from February twenty-six twenty twenty-four meeting the chair will entertain a motion or discussion.
Discussion.
Go ahead discussion.
February first.
We'll do the discussion of some.
I wonder to start the discussion if we should put this into executive session at the next meeting.
Yeah I don't think that the the job description itself would qualify for executive session discussion and now you know discussion of my performances and town manager definitely would but but if 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 people are tired of being here then you know we can very we I'm not saying I won't do but we could.
I I would just say to be perfectly honest I didn't take an appropriate amount of time to consider it and I'd like to have a couple.
Are you making a motion?
Okay?
Yeah I'll make a motion that we move the discussion of the town manager's job description to our next regular meeting.
Is there a second? There's a second all right so we are tabling this to the next meeting oh all in favor excuse me. Thank you all in favor James no not in favor Bruce?
I'm not in favor.
Okay so five and two.
Just a variant.
Yep. Bruce?
I really don't think it's fair I mean they have him hanging and I'm sitting there pondering it again I'd like to get it off the table and then do agenda.
Okay. All right item thirty-four consideration of approval of the minutes of the February fifth and February twenty-six twenty twenty-four council meetings.
I move that we approve the February fifth and February twenty-six council meeting minutes.
Second.
Discussion all in favor all are in favor all right item twenty-eight consideration of recommendations from the appointments committee tabled from February twenty-six twenty twenty-four meeting turn to the chair of appointments.
Oh I had to pull my paper here.
Wayne.
So I would like to recommend the appointment of the reappointment of Don Holly the utilities district and also appointing Dean Stockford the utility district board trustee.
How many how many slots in that two?
There's one reappointment. Two.
In the utilities district how many open just one?
Two.
Two two okay.
Don Holly the reappointment and then.
Okay all right.
Dean Stockford for the appointment.
All right I said that go ahead.
All right in discussion I I had a thought that traditionally the Winthrop Utilities District has stood against expansion so I would like to know if those questions were asked of the reappointee and the new appointee what their feelings were on that matter.
No I did not touch base with them on that matter that particular matter.
All right then I'm probably gonna vote negatively on this issue.
When is the first scheduled meeting Anthony do you know of of the?
Utilities.
Utilities committee.
Oh golly.
Oh, golly, I don't.
No.
Oh, you know what? It may be tomorrow.
But there would be some time later, it wouldn't just be.
Well, then, uh, you know, in order to give everybody the appropriate amount of time, because there's a couple new ones here as well.
Yep.
You know, why don't we forego this until our next meeting? Whether it be a budget directed meeting, are you okay with that, Andy?
Yeah.
It'll give Roy the time to investigate or myself.
And I'm not just okay, I like it.
Can we talk about what we wanna kind of like look in?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm gonna table item twenty-eight.
A second. And the discussion is that before Bruce took over appointments, um it was, uh before Roy took over appointments, it was Bruce, and then it was me. And I think Bruce and I at least are familiar with the Winthrop Water District's recoustance when it comes to discussing expansion, uh which is a detriment to our long-term plans for the town and also fails to help reduce the rates. So I, I really would like to give.
And that would be with regard to, and not to interrupt, I'm sorry, just to get some clarification. That would be to determine whether the Winthrop Utilities District and the Augusta Water District.
No, nothing to do with that.
Okay, the expansion?
The expansion of water and sewer lines. If someone wants to put a new project out behind Turkey Lane or.
To align with.
God knows where else, and it's always been a solid, no, we won't do that.
To align with the comprehensive.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and then I would also like to know, you know, that they're aware of the connection and the discussion with the district, the larger district.
They, they are.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Oh, you did ask.
Okay. So are we tabling this to the eighteenth?
Okay.
Yeah. Is the eighteenth give you enough time?
Yeah.
All in favor?
All in, all in favor? Okay, all are in favor. To table to the February eighteenth, or excuse me, March eighteenth. What month is this? March eighteenth meeting. All right, moving to.
It's sounding like me.
Other, right, other business, public comment?
Will we start with Michael Denver?
Oh. I think all of it, item twenty-eight's been tabled.
Tabled, hold on.
Okay.
Public comment, anything from the audience? Anything online? Okay, moving on to the town manager's report.
Um, so a lot to report on, but I'll try to breeze through this quickly. Earlier today, I sent you the A final draft of the comprehensive plan. So my thought was I would give you folks a month to look it over, and then maybe we would schedule a discussion about it on, uh, on April the first. Does that seem like a reasonable approach?
It seems reasonable.
Okay.
Right?
No pun intended.
Last week, pardon me, we foreclosed on ten properties. So we're gonna be sending out our ninety day notices to those property owners. I put in a call to our real estate agent earlier today, he's gonna get back with me later in the week, he wasn't available um early this week. And so I, I want, I want him to at least assess the properties to ensure that they're worth our foreclosing on and, and then turning around and selling. Uh, but we already, and when I talked to him today, was the end of the ninety day notice for one fifty-seven Annabessacook Road and five Winthrop Center Road. So we're gonna be working towards listing those properties.
So the five Winthrop Center? Those calls didn't come back.
I, we never, I never received any response.
Five Winthrop Center Road, and what was the other one?
Uh, one fifty-seven Annabessacook Road. And that, that, that Annabessacook property has drawn lots of questions and interest, so there are a lot of people interested.
It gets worked.
Uh, speaking of the greater Augusta Utility District, we've actually scheduled them to come on, on, uh, April the first as well. It's into that conversation we talked about just last week. By tomorrow, I anticipate we'll have those paving contracts done for the next three years. I talked, talked with the uh all state representative uh earlier today, so that's a go. On Friday, uh John, our ambulance chief, and our prior chief and our police chief and I will be meeting about the uh radio communication system RFP that our attorney has looked over. So uh I think we're gonna be able to issue that next week as well for a consultant to design a system for us. Uh, tomorrow, I'll be talking with the town attorney about the first draft of our mooring ordinance. He previously received that, has had a chance to review it, and you know, he and I are gonna have a discussion, then we'll schedule the next mooring committee meeting. Uh, probably just keep the regular meeting date for this month. Uh, tomorrow is election day from eight AM to eight PM, so if you haven't voted, stop by the town office and, uh, encast your ballot. Hug your, hug your clerk, because it's gonna be a long day for them. Uh, here's some things that we have for the eighteenth. Chapters one and two of the personnel policy, so you guys decided you wanted to look at that on a case by, on a chapter by chapter basis. Chapter one's very short, like a half page or whatever, so we'll, we'll have uh chapters one and two for you to take a look at. And also a discussion about, uh, you know, in our new committee policy, uh each committee is to have a council liaison, so uh think about which, uh, which committees you might like to, to serve in that regard.
Why don't, why don't make a comment there in the program, on the committee thing? I got two phone calls um explaining to me by committee members um that the new committee policy may be overly burdensome. So I'm gonna say, that's it, you know, it's just.
Okay.
We're looking at trying to schedule the uh Village Revitalization Committee's first meeting. Uh, purring those chickens is a, become a difficult exercise, but we'll continue to plug away at that. Uh, we've had so far one response about our, after we contacted those five engineering firms about the Screw Street neighborhood drainage issue. And one of the engineers said that, uh, who happens to live in Wayne, said that he could do that for us. Uh, he said, you know, the cost would depend upon the amount of time that they invest in it. Um, but he estimated the cost at a few grand. That's all the information that he gave you. So. So huh?
Seems reasonable.
Can I tap into that? So I've been up there and looking around stuff, and I was just thinking too, is, that water tower, I mean, that's, that's full of water, correct? If there was a catastrophic failure, there is nothing to stop that. What in the world? If, can we invite the Utilities District to come in and talk about, A, that whole area, and what they own, what they don't own? And then why there is no, like, catchment or like what would happen?
Is it still news?
Yeah, I, I don't know, is it still news? I have no idea, it's in the middle of the woods.
I know, I, I would like to see a, even just a tax map showing us where the water tower is, where the water district property is, uh where the town road stops, it starts, so that we all have a better picture of what we're dealing with. As Steve right on pointed out, we're, uh, you, Bradley pointed out. I can't even remember my own name. I'm Anthony too, unfortunately. Um, yeah, she, she helps me on these things. Um, you know, it'd be nice to sit there and look at the map and just have a big picture of, you know, water tower, where the paving stops for the down starts privately. You know, and just, just look at this before we.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I went up there and looked around after last meeting as well. You know, I say a couple thousand dollars, I mean, to have somebody kind of go up. And after looking it all over, you know, I've had a discussion with Roy a little bit about it, but I don't see where Sue's coming and lining saying there was something pre-existing there for a ditch that we may have had, or, or would it really solve the issue? I, I think that we'd have somebody go up there and really evaluate.
I, Sue got rid of my truck.
And, and.
I know exactly where the ditch was.
But, but to go up and maybe put ditching appropriately on each side, Anthony, I think it'd be, you know, give us our public works some guidelines of what to do.
Yeah, so, so I too have spoken with Councilman uh Wayman, and so, uh, so some of his, uh, his thoughts have been shared with.
Good, I think you had mine, so I was just gonna let you know.
I said the public works director, I said, I want you to go take a look at this and see what you think, so I hadn't, I hadn't heard back from him.
I'm in favor.
So, first of all, uh, we'll invite the Winthrop Utility District on April first, the same night that we invite the Augusta Utility District here, so.
I'll be able to ask that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so a few grand, is everyone comfortable with that? Should I go ahead and?
What level of, what level of uh?
If we did buy streets?
No, yeah, what level of design, are you just gonna?
Just to look at it.
Few thousand dollars.
We haven't gotten to that level yet.
Is that getting to the bottom of High Street?
So I will forward an email to you guys, and you look it over and then.
Yeah, sounds good.
Can you, can you shrink down a piece of the tax map, show us where all the boundaries are?
Of what?
Well, where does the town road stop and the development road actually start? You know, where are we responsible to ditch and where are we ditching private property? Because as I understand it, that entire, like, Hill Street.
Well, I mean, we're just talking about the roads.
Yeah, we're just talking about the road, we're not talking about a private.
Right now, I don't think we've agreed to go on and do it.
No, but the road, some of the road is private. So if we had a little tax map, we'd know, you know.
So it's.
Do you want to add this to another agenda item?
Yeah.
For discussion?
I think it's in the town's interest to deal with the road water, the ditching water, and not deal with, the town's not in the business of dry basements. The town's in the business of managing road water.
To make sure the road stays intact.
You know, I, I just wrote Shannon a little note a while ago. You know, we were talking about the Combsy Watershed, and we've had the most rain this year we've had in forever. And, you know, I have no way, unfortunately, to blame the town, but my daughter's house on Charles Street never had a wet basement. I never had a wet basement. You, I don't think I've ever had a wet basement.
All right, let's move on with the town manager's report.
We're gonna get shut down.
So yeah, we'll have budgets to you on, uh, on March eighteenth. Uh, right now, uh, last, last report that we ran, uh, it was three point six eight percent. That was with the three percent increase sort of across the board for most positions. We've managed to find some savings in there, so maybe less than three point six eight percent. The superintendent told me today that he's trying to get his budget down to seven and a half percent.
Seven and a half percent?
That's what he said.
I'll be voting on that one.
I'd like to, i- i- if, if you guys are agreeable to it, I'd like to bring to the next meeting a proposal to uh change the fees that we charge for notary services, in which we would not charge Winthrop residents in order to notarize their documents. Uh, I think that's, you know, they pay taxes, that's, uh, our staff is doing it there in the office during office hours. It's a service that we should be able to provide, given the tax solvency we collect now. Um, as part of that, we'd like to propose a slight fee for non-residents to pay for that service. But I think, I think we should eliminate the fees for town residents.
Do we currently pay recertification costs for notaries?
Oh, that I don't know.
Uh, I mean, uh, you know, if you're gonna offer the service free, then you should provide, if they're town employees that are notarizing documents, you should reimburse them or the town should pay for their recertification.
Yeah, I, I have no issue with that either.
Yeah.
The town does pay, the town does pay.
Oh, they do pay them? Okay.
Thanks, sir.
So, uh, so I'll bring that to the next, uh, to the next meeting. And then also, um, I, uh, this is just FYI, something I'm looking at doing, is I feel a little isolated from the community with the barriers for getting into the town manager's office. I was more accustomed to when people needed to see the town manager, they were able to access me uh pretty easily. I was in the Manchester town office not too long ago, it was the same, it was a similar sort of setup uh in Manchester as well. I always assumed that the lock and the phone there uh in order to get back into our offices was something that was placed there because we're in a school facility and, and security. Now, that was something that the town actually implemented uh a few years ago, and so.
People that wanted to hide.
It wasn't always there.
It wasn't always there.
Yeah, and so, and, and so I.
COVID.
Well, and so I talked with the, with, with Jim about it today, he said, suits me just fine, and so I think.
I was totally was good at school too.
Well, and so, and so I'm, I'm, I'm seriously considered opening that door and.
There was.
And getting, and getting rid of the phone so, so people can, can access me.
Yeah, that's fine. Oh, it was put in place because there was an active shooter?
It was put in place for planning.
For planning for an active shooter?
It was why security was enhanced.
I, I've always liked it to be open. Anytime I, back when my kids were in school, I'd do a couple of superintendent or just get access in there, I always liked it to be open and not have to feel like there's that barrier.
I'll consult with the police chief about it and see, and see what he thinks, but.
So what do we, what do we think consensus wise as a council? I mean, I'm pro-opening.
I'm pro-opening.
I'm fine, I'm finally opening it.
If that door that goes up to the school is.
Because I feel like there's documents and things as well, and what if someone just came in?
And we, we certainly probably.
They were always there though, kid, we have to go in and view it and stuff.
Yeah.
Tax map or something.
There's always something in those offices.
You sign.
Exactly, there's always someone in the offices. They should be able to let them in.
Yeah.
Bernice has got a question.
I believe that they first got there um during COVID. Um, it has been a sense of security for some of us that are working behind that door. Um, as you may or may not be aware, with the recovery homes that we have, we have now moved our general assistance interviewing down to the police station. Um, why we would open that door up to allow anybody that's coming for general assistance or anything else to come through that door, I still don't understand why we would take away the sense of security that's there.
So our general assistance administrator, her office would continue to be locked because we do have cash in there since she works in the finance office. And, and, you know, I've already thought about putting a sign there to say, if you're there for general assistance, please call this number by appointment.
I, I agree, mark this day, but I agree with that thing a hundred percent. I do not.
I'm rethinking it now.
Oh, geez.
What, did you agree with?
If Andy agrees with me.
He's gonna change it fine.
Some of the law and the, and the logic, so.
I, I don't know how comfortable I am, and I can, I'm all for openness, okay? But to have somebody wander into the finance office to be looking for somebody else, I mean, it disrupts the flow of work that's going on in there.
Well, and that's what I just said, Bruce, the finance office, we would continue to keep that locked. Uh, there is a magnetic lock on it simply because, because of the cash that we have in it.
I personally would keep with it, like, just the phone, I have no problem, because I, I go in for meetings too, and I have no problem dialing the phone and being buzzed in. I mean, that doesn't, like, put up a wall between my security or be my openness with being able to come in and see anyone either. Um, but, I mean, if someone stepped out of the office to get a cup of coffee or use the restroom or something, would they have to lock the door every time they left? Maybe, maybe not, but I just think that that is an extra barrier. I, I don't think that that's a problem because there's a phone there that they can call you still or even at the front office and check.
I see it as a barrier between the citizens and the town manager.
Well, can I ask a question then? Could you poll your employees that are in that section?
Yeah.
And ask them if there is a sense of security with that door, as Shannon pointed out? I mean, I always go to the clerk and say, hey, buzz me in, you know what I mean? You know, um, just to hear the annoying little buzzer go off, you know? But I, I mean, I think that that should be something that, that, the people that work in there should. Bring in the loophole.
Yeah, true.
That was my degree.
And that's the, uh, that's the end of the town manager's report.
Okay.
I do have one, one question I was waiting for you to finish up. Where do we stay with the library? I mean, the, the elevator in the library.
Uh, I think tomorrow, Roy, is the deadline for getting proposals, we have no proposals. And we've talked with our architect a couple of times, he was gonna rattle some agents, so whether or not we get something or not. It's not unusual for things to come in on the last day of an RFP process, but Richard and I are concerned.
All right, are we moving to an executive meeting?
Please.
All right, thank you very much to everyone for coming out today. We are going to move into an executive session, running to one.